So you're good, Pat?
All right, so I'll open the, um, that's all, I'm sorry, I just can't, I'll open the planning board meeting for Wednesday, April 7th, 2021, being 6:30 and having quorum of the, the board, hold on one second, I just want to find my. All right, so I found it. So before we begin, I'll read the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This member of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded within 48 hours. We will post a link of the recording on the town's website and/or other social media pages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. I'm Patrick Frisco, the Chair, Mr. Raymond DeGemin, the Vice Chair, Mrs. Jean Garino, the Clerk, Mr. Michael McDonald, Mr. Stephen Geller, Ms. Astrid Rojas, who's an Associate Member, and we welcome a new Associate Member for their first meeting tonight, Mrs. Julia Santacangelo. So, um, during this meeting, all votes will be taken through roll calls. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. Mrs. Jennifer Burke, Community Economic Development Director, Mrs. Jasmine Ferronacci, the Assistant Town Planner, Mr. Azu Antenaro, the Town Engineer, and Mrs. Leslie Do, the Office Administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing, allows for public comment, we ask to use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and address in the question. The host will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the Raise My Hand feature on the participant menu. You'll be unmuted when the host recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before you ask a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. So I'll go back to the agenda. So first up on the agenda this evening, we have a public hearing. This is for 60 to 88 Broad Street by West Point Realty. It's a continued public hearing. It's a special permit and site plan for construction, construction projects, which includes four mixed-use buildings with commercial space on the first floor and residential units on the second, on the upper floors, as well as separate parking to serve the buildings. This is MAPS 21 Lots 95 to 98 into 202 to 205. So I will open that public hearing. So the way that the meeting will go this evening is, we've heard a lot of testimony on this. What I'd like to do is if the board has any final questions, to help them better understand the project, we could ask those to the applicant and the engineer and the design team. Then we can open it up for public comment. If there have been public comments that haven't been made already, they can be made, but I would ask for an exception. We received an email from the police chief who has a hard deadline at 7 o'clock, so if we could let him speak briefly and then go into the board questions and then back to public comment, would that be okay with the board?
Fine.
Injection. So I don't know if Chief Delmonte's on, but if you'd like to speak.
He's done and he's been unmuted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you fine, so yeah.
All right, thank you very much. I'll only take just a couple of minutes, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here. Obviously, I'm the police chief, but I'm also a resident. I was raised in this community, along with my wife, chose to raise my family here as well. And I know many of you that are on this call recognize it from that position and appreciate what this town has done for many of us. And so, very briefly, I'm here in support of the Broad Street Development Project. I'm not here because of who's proposing the project. No disrespect to Mr. Pascal or any of the parties that are involved. Just the opposite, I respect what they're trying to do. I'm here because of what it represents to this community, and in my opinion, it represents an opportunity. I know not everybody's going to agree with me, and we can all disagree and agree on certain aspects of it. But one of the concerns, I have a great concern, not only as a public servant, but also as a resident of this community about the status of our downtown area. And I think this project can be part of that solution. There are a lot of issues that are in our downtown area that we can all see when we go through there. I think this provides us with an opportunity for mutual growth and opportunity to really save the dying downtown. It's not the only answer, of course. We're fortunate that we really have a true common. As you know, there are many communities that have central areas of their town that don't really have a common. Oftentimes, they're a connector of roads. But we're really blessed that somebody along the line or people along the line recognize that we should really have a place where we can all meet, if you will, a common area. The reality, though, is for a variety of reasons, our downtown has fallen into disrepair. There's been a real lack of private investment. We have vacant storefronts, struggling business in an otherwise very vibrant town. And unfortunately, this cannot continue. That's the reason that I'm here today. There are things we can do as a community to help, and one of them is partner with responsible development and improvement. This requires compromise, does not come without growing pains. It will, and it will result in increased traffic. It will require other traffic mitigation and safety efforts, including better located crosswalks, stronger lighting, and well-maintained sidewalks. But I think in this case, and in the final analysis, this compromise is the right thing for our community. I believe it will ultimately make this town a better place to live, work, and play. It's not the panacea. It's not the answer to all of our problems. But I do think that we need to do things to move our town forward, and I think this is a real big step in doing that. I appreciate the work. I recognize the work that our town representatives, particularly Jen and her staff in the Community Economic Development Office, have done to try to get a plan that is a good compromise, a good balance, and is in the best interests of everyone. And that is what has motivated me to come here today. My interest is in our community, and I think this is one of those steps to help revitalize a badly needed effort in the downtown area. So with that, I don't want to take any more of your time. Thank you.
But Chief, just, I don't know if there are any, but if the board has any public safety questions, are you okay to answer those?
Sure, I'll do my best. No, sure, I'll do my best.
Is there anybody on the board that would like to ask the chief any public safety questions related to the project?
Um, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask one simple question. Chief Delmonte, have you looked at the concerns of safety with regard to crossing Broad Street on this project?
Yes, so I've, yes, sir. So to answer your question, I've looked at, in fact, most recently, the overall area of the downtown, and I recognize that there is, in your specific question about parking across the street, I recognize that that is a a concern, but I would also say that in that area, we need to do better with not only the improvements of the sidewalk and lighting and vegetation. There are a whole host of things that we need to do to help mitigate that. I don't know if that, did that answer your question, Mr. Jamian?
I guess so. I mean, I guess specifically, the fact that Broad Street is a heavily traveled street, and particularly in the afternoon.
Yeah.
People will be crossing back and forth, not simply shoppers going back and forth, but residents. I'm just wondering, from your perspective, in terms of traffic and obviously enforcement and so forth, whether you see that as a potential problem, especially when the the units are filled up?
Sure. Yeah, well, the easy answer is sure, is always a potential. Yeah, I mean, we're always concerned about that. You know, even in the, and I'm trying not to change the attention to Central Square, but I do think this is part of that bigger puzzle. And so, yes, there are considerations like that. I think that's a legitimate area of concern, to answer your question. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? I know he has a.
Yes, please, Pat. Will, if traffic should tie up worse down there, you know, when the train comes through and the traffic ties up and the lights don't change?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Will those things be able to be adjusted after the fact? In some way, shape, or form?
Well, I will not profess to be an engineer of traffic science. What I can give you is anecdotal observations and what my hope will be. I think part of the answer to, and your question is very articulate, knowledgeable, that, you know, there's a loop that's down at the railroad tracks that triggers the lights, so you can't take a left from Central Square onto Main Street for three cycles in some cases, and particularly in the afternoon. This is a an ever source of frustration for many. And I sympathize with that, and I think that that is a true concern and does happen. So yes, that's the reason that that loop is there, by the way, is the concern about extending traffic down to that railroad crossing. That's why it exists that way. I also think, though, that this is part of that, again, if I can look at it holistically with a bigger puzzle approach, this is just one piece of that puzzle. I believe that that Central Square is something that we really need to reevaluate. And if we reevaluate the structure of Central Square, including Broad Street, Main Street, Summer Street, South and Bedford, that all connect, I think we should be talking about making a better improvement to that light problem that you referred to. That's where that solution lies. That's my anecdotal answer.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions before we move on? I can't see anybody raised. I can't see that screen, so I don't, there's nobody in this bar, correct? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
I've unmuted the project representative, Pat.
God, I'm struggling. I apologize. All right, so, so before I open up to the board, I can't see, something wrong. I can't see anybody, but I can hear everybody. So the project representatives are here, correct, Miss Burke?
That's correct, and I have unmuted the representative that I believe wishes to speak.
Is that Mr. Clarkson? I can't.
Mr. Clarkson, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here.
All right, so Mr. Clarkson, if you'd like to add anything before we have the board ask questions to, to, have we invited Mr. Antenaro yet, Ms. Ferronacci?
I believe he's been invited. I don't think he's on yet.
So, Mr. Clarkson, if you'd make your presentation, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would note that Mr. Pascal is here and on the call with us as well. Obviously, most of the technical issues have been reviewed over the last several weeks, and so I won't restate any of those. I thought I would very, very briefly just really wrap up the perspective of the developer. Once again, I'm sorry, my name is Troy Clarkson from Clarkson Consulting, and I represent the developer, West Point Realty. And when I first talked to Jim about this project three years ago, we knew that it would be transformational, and I echo the words of Chief Delmonte. And, but we also knew that it would take a lot of work and it would take compromise. And so, over the years, we have worked with the town, and as I've stated before, worked with the town council to collaborate and to create an update to the ordinance. And I believe that the majority of the counselors that voted for the changes in the ordinance envisioned a mixed-use project like this, that, as Chief Delmonte said, will transform the Central Business District and create a vibrant and walkable downtown where people can live and shop and work and eat and do all those things. Over the course of this project, I believe and would submit to the board that the developer has always been willing to compromise, to make improvements, to make changes to the project. The project that's before you tonight is vastly different than what was originally proposed, and I think and would submit to you that that demonstrates the developer's flexibility and willingness. The unit count has been reduced significantly. The mitigation that has been proposed has increased significantly to well over a million dollars now. So, Mr. Pascal, at all times, has been willing to be flexible and to try to make this project work. And all along, obviously, when there have been changes made, the costs, both in terms of time and financial resources, have been borne by the developer, as they should. But tonight, here we are at what is hopefully nearing a final point in the process, and and I think it's important to note, as you consider this plan before you, that, and I know I speak for Mr. Pascal, that he believes, I believe, that this project that's before you in its current form is the best representation of this project. But I think it's also important to note that it's from the developer's perspective, the final representation of the project, and any further changes, particularly in the density and the unit count, will render the project financially unfeasible. And that's, I, I and Mr. Pascal respect the members of the planning board, and the town manager, and Ms. Burke, too much to not be honest at this point, because we've worked well together for several years now. And so I think it's just important that we put that out there and note that not to draw a line in the sand, but to be realistic in terms of what the developer's ability is to make further reductions in the unit count and further increases in the additional costs to the developer. The question was asked of me several weeks ago if the for-sale signs on the property were sincere. And at that time, I answered honestly and said, yes, that Mr. Pascal is at a point where he needs to consider what his options are to recoup the investment that he's made in the property and the carrying costs that he's had for several years, if the proposal is not successful. And there are several proposals on the table, one of which is from a church that would provide significant funds to Mr. Pascal, but would provide no benefit and certainly no taxes to the town. Again, I say that not as any sort of threat, but as a very realistic position where Mr. Pascal is today, and I've worked too long and too closely with the representatives of the community to not be honest at this point. And so I just think it's important to summarize where the developer is at and hope that you can take into account the sentiments, not only of Chief Delmonte, but others who have strong roots in the community, and see this project as a gateway to a vibrant future in the downtown. And I'm hopeful that we can move forward this evening and begin what will transform this part of town for generations to come. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Clarkson, before you have any other representative speaks, if you wouldn't mind, we have Mr. Antenaro with us right now, who has a limited timeframe due to some other obligations. So if the board could ask questions, the both, I guess, Mr. Silva's team and Mr. Antenaro, any, what I'd like to do is try to get through any remaining engineering questions that we have so that we can cut Mr. Antenaro loose if possible.
Yeah, I see that Larry and his team are on the call, as, again, as is Jim, so I think we're ready for any of those questions.
Okay, so I'd ask members of the board that have site or engineering questions, if we could focus on site and engineering questions right now for the applicant's team and our town engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I do have questions. I have one set of questions that would include both the town engineer and Silva, but then I have separate ones for Mr. Silva. How do you want to do this?
We'll just ask your questions. I think it's good that both engineers here, so.
The main question for both is that when, in the set of plans that we received two weeks ago, three weeks ago, Mr. Silva has two crosswalks going across Broad Street. And if I looked at the plan, unless I missed it, he did not stipulate what these crosswalks would look like, what they are, what design, so forth. Mr. Antenaro's email to the board stated one crosswalk, and he did talk about a specific, a possible, specific design. If we are, I think this is a critical decision that has to be made. Are we talking about one crosswalk, two crosswalks, three crosswalks? And what are they going to look like? And I just, I'm confused now about where we're going on this. Anybody want to respond to that?
Oh, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Azur, the town engineer. So my comment, as memorialized in the email that Mr. Jamian has alluded to, is based on the, my review of the traffic study that was done, and then the traffic patterns, if you will, on Broad Street. I do think that every time that you have a crosswalk, that is our indicative of our opportunity for traffic to slow down. Obviously, crosswalk is for pedestrians, and you have traffic traveling both in the northern direction on Route 18, as well as southerly direction. When you have too many potential for stop and go, that increases, the more crosswalks you have, actually, it is counterintuitive, but it is actually a recipe, and there were four potential increase in the number of accidents that could happen. When you have a centralized stop, crosswalk with proper warning light and advanced warning signs in both directions alerting oncoming traffic to a crosswalk, that will be more beneficial. And then if you have an area, some sort of what I will call a turnoff area or for a holding pattern for the pedestrians, so that they can gather in an area that will provide refuge. And then when the light turns on for them to walk, then traffic will know that they have stopped, and pedestrians will flow right across. And then that light will change, and that light will be primarily for pedestrians to cross. And so, with the, given the frontage that you have for this proposed project, I do think that two or three crosswalks are not, in my professional opinion, advisable.
We don't have a design for a crosswalk, though. You mentioned a light. We, I mean, we have nothing before us in terms of what to approve. Do you have something specific that you would recommend in terms of a crosswalk, Mr. Antenaro?
Yes, sir. The crosswalk will have to be directly across from the park, and that will be on the east side. So if you assume the plan to be oriented, the way it is shown, north, being at the top of the page, and you can see that parking area will be directly across the parking, the curb cut on the west side between the two southerly buildings. That will be the location where I will introduce a crosswalk.
And would you, would you agree that a bump out is a good idea or a bad idea?
I know the bump out is what I was calling the island.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
My other, my other question for you and for Mr. Silva is that, I don't know if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, I brought up the fact that with three access roads and driveways into this project, you have the potential of cars coming out of all three and making left turns. And I suggested possibly, either at certain times or all the time, not allowing left turns out of the out of the roads. I think in your email, you talked about one driveway, as I did at the last meeting, and that may be probably not going to work. But assuming we have three, do you feel that there should be some restrictions regarding turns? And if you're not sure, do you think that it's necessary to do another traffic study? Not necessarily regarding volume, but in terms of bright turn, left turn, lights, and so forth?
Mr. Jamian, Mr. Chairman, in response to that question, I do believe it is similar to the recommendation that I made when the Comblon Farm site plant was being revamped. Where you have too many turning movements, I will certainly, it might be inconvenient to the site users, but we have this many curb openings. I would have, I would have strongly, strongly recommend that the restriction of turning movements coming out of the the project site to eliminate the left turning movement, especially, especially during the morning and afternoon peak hours. And those peak hours are identified in the traffic report. So in the, in the absence, and I'm looking at it as, okay, they have already designed this project, and they show in the, where you are in the ninth inning, if I may use our baseball terminology, we are at the bottom of the ninth inning, and I just don't believe that we will need to start introducing and asking both teams to go back to the start of the first inning over. So what I mean by that is, I will, I did make a mention in my email that traffic circulation between the parcels that would actually make it one contiguous project would have been much more preferable, in my opinion. Now, having said that, and again, we are in the ninth inning, I think, in my view, a restricted turning movement will achieve the some of a degree of objective that I would have, I would have been looking for in terms of having our internal circulation occurring between the two, the three parcels. So I will clearly, whatever the board does, again, the decision is the prerogative of the board, and that's why I love my job. I don't have to decide. I just have to spot comments. So with that, I think that would be a good, a good approach.
Okay, then, just the final question to you, then, Mr. Antenaro. Based on, you know, your expertise in terms of engineering, considering what you just said regarding the placement and type of crosswalk and the fact that we restrict turns, you look upon these plans as doable, then, something that you feel is workable from the engineering perspective?
That would be correct, Mr. Jamian. That would be correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure how you want to do this, Mr. Chairman. Some of these questions would go to Mr. Silva also.
Mr. Antenaro, how much time do you have?
Waiting for the rest of my family to come back, and so we can do what we have to do. I think they are still on the highway, so I will let you know when I have to leave, I guess.
Give us a 10-minute warning, will you?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Jamian.
Well, no, if others have questions for Mr. Antenaro, they probably should ask them now. I have questions for Mr. Silva, but but if others members of the board want to talk to Mr. Antenaro, then by all means, do so.
So I'll just follow up on your question, Ray. So, Azu, obviously, these are all good ideas, but we don't have the technical expertise to put that in the decision letter as to which one should be right turn, left turn, if there should be an island added, where the crosswalks should go, et cetera. That's something you feel we can condition and you can work with the team to further modify the exits and entrances and where the crosswalks go?
Yes, sir. If you look at the crosswalk, it will be easy to handle pretty much. The lighting, the signalization. Uh, the lighting, uh, the signalization will also be easy. Uh, I've got the specifications for those in my repertoire, so I can provide those. In terms of a right turn movement only during the AM and PM, uh, peak hours. That has to apply to all three drivers, all three curb openings.
So, so Mr. Entonero, you. I don't think in this plan, they're specifying any terms of lighting or anything for the crosswalk at this point, signalization out, out there at this point. So that would be in addition to what they're proposing?
But that will be a requirement because, because you can't have that many people crossing back and forth. And then relying on the good, the goodwill of, uh, uh, traffic to stop and recognize them. You do need, you didn't need one of the lights. I have those specifications that actually comes on when people are crossing and it will show red in to both directions of traffic.
Okay, and that, that's a cost obviously by the developer to connect his project, correct?
That would be correct. And then there should be, uh, a warning sign, just like, uh, you've seen sometimes on roads. Where says, uh, uh, pedestrian crossing light ahead. So that will be, uh, on the south, for the southbound traffic. I would imagine that we will have that in the vicinity of the Burger King frontage. And then for the northbound traffic, I would imagine we will have it just, uh, by, um, uh, where you have the Angelos, so that they have enough time to react.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, one quick question. Would that include that left turn? Would that include coming out of the parking lot or just the, the apartment buildings?
No, they will include the parking lot. The parking lot is part of the project, Mr. Jimmy.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Entonero, they propose curb cuts, that bump outs further north, I mean, smaller bump outs that aren't connected towards, that aren't connected toward, to any crosswalk. Those seem to be more of a hindrance for plowing and packing and things like that. Is that something that should be removed? If they're not, if they're not associated with a crosswalk, should any bump out be removed, I guess is the question.
The, well, now the finish, so, uh, when you have a lot of competing interests. Then you have to look at it from what is the primary function or role of the town engineer or the board. I, I think the primary function will be what? Our safety, health and welfare of the public. And I think the safety aspect trumps any inconvenience that were a plow when our operation will, uh, might have entertained. So, uh, the, I will, I will give more deference to our protection of.
Okay, so my other question is curb cuts along Broad Street and bringing utilities through the sidewalk. There appears to be a lot of disruption to the sidewalk and the area around the sidewalk just to complete the project. So it, it appears that maybe the only curb cut that's adequate in terms of width right now is the one that's going into the old friendlies on the west side anyway. And it appears that, um, the building described, the seventy-six, seventy-eight would need a major widening of that, of that curb cut as well as what's described as building D. So in the, in the traffic study, all those sidewalks and everything will have to be upgraded to ADA compliance, correct?
That is correct. That is, that is very paramount, that is paramount.
And that's something that we would do whether or not there was a mitigation proposed anyway, right? That, that's something that the sidewalk would have to be upgraded with the curb cut opening. That's what we require in town to be ADA compliant, correct?
Well, that would be correct. That's what we did, uh, that's what was required when, uh, the laundry, uh, the, uh, prime laundry, uh, came in.
Okay.
Side improvement.
Okay. That's all I have for Mr. Entonero. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Entonero? Uh, so one, one question I have for Mr. Entonero and Mr. Silver, building D doesn't have any handicapped spaces shown on the plan. Is that something that needs to be revised and will that impact the number of parking spaces on that site? And is, is, is one required? I believe if you look at five twenty-one CMR. Would require handicapped access to that building, just like the other buildings as well as a spot?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it will have to have one. Uh, uh, it's one of those you can eat your cake and have it. The, 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 all the sites are considered one project, but they are not interconnected. So since they are not interconnected, each one has to have a handicap parking.
So, Mr. Silver, is that something that could easily be added without losing a spot there or how, how would that work?
I can't really, I can't really see it right there. Rebecca's on the line. Um, do you know what he's referring to, Rebecca?
Uh, building D is the small one that has the five parking spots. If we can get up to sheet three, I believe, not that one. That's not a good one. Uh, Jasmine, can you go to a different sheet?
All right, I'm trying. I'm working on it.
I know you're doing a great job. Uh, go up to the page three, I think. That one, that one. That's a good one. Let's zoom in right into that parking lot at D. Let's see what we got. Thank you. Oh, oh, no, what happened? Push control while you scroll. There you go. So can we fit a handicap? Um.
Well, well, the code, the code says you need X number of parking, right? You're using, so any one of those can be converted to handicap.
Correct.
That's part of your parking requirement.
You need to have the five or the eight foot.
Right, you have to have one designated for handicap parking. You don't have to.
Right, I don't, I don't believe it needs to be an additional space. I believe they can convert one of the existing spaces.
Just by taking, yeah, just by striping a portion of what's adjacent to it.
Right, but my question is, is by striping, what's adjacent to it, will you lose a spot there? That's, that's all.
No, we're not going to lose a spot. We lose a little bit of green space.
Okay, and we have that, all right, all right. So that, that needs to be added to building D, right?
Correct.
Any other engineering questions?
Well, I was going to go back to what the questions, what Ray had when you're ready.
Sure, and just while we're on the sheet, Rebecca, there's no, there's no tree, I mean, I know that we have a landscape plan. Um, but there are no trees that shown in front of building F. Is that just a, an oversight or is that?
Yeah, um, we would have to refer to the landscape plan because I believe she did put plantings.
Right, all right. As long as, we'll just have to reference the landscape plan then, all right.
Oh, look at that. There you go.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there are, yeah, there you go. On the landscape plan, there are several trees in front of building F.
I think the only question I have, which is actually one of, uh, town residents' questions was regarding, uh, trash trucks and whether there would be space. I don't think we've ever discussed that, or, you know, what, where the designated spaces are for those. And if, if there's enough space for those trucks to be going in and out.
You can see on that screen the location of the dumpsters.
Oh, there they are.
They're all, are they all straight, straight in to be able to pick them up and to go over the top to unload them?
Thank you.
Okay, any other board engineering questions?
They're not, well, to, to whom?
To either one.
We're actually not engineer, well, actually, well, I don't know if they're engineering questions. Is there going to be a freight elevator in these buildings, Larry? A freight elevator?
I, I don't, I, I can't answer that, but is Tim on the line? Is the architect on the line? Or, or Jim, could you answer that question?
We do not have a freight elevator.
Is that an issue? Uh, uh, it's an actual question. I'm not trying to be difficult. Is that, is that going to be an issue getting moving stuff up to the fourth floor and to the roof when you work up there?
I believe that we'll have a large enough elevator that would serve as both people and, um, product as necessary.
What about the, uh, I think in Ms. Burke's, one of her, when she, one of her comments, written comments. She mentioned that loading could be from the street. Have you decided on where, I mean, loading, unloading parcels and so forth? Is that going to be from the street, from the back? Yeah, I don't, I don't see any determination where that's going to be.
Is that for me, Ray?
Anybody.
I, I think it will be from the rear. So, but for the most part, trucks will not be in the front of the building. Um, they will be in the rear.
So there'll be a, a door in the back, so truck, an area in the back where trucks can come in, park, load, unload and leave.
That is, that is correct. There are, there are rear doors if you, if we could look at the back of these buildings, but.
You know, there'll be, there's enough space to be, to leave, but doesn't need space for, you know, the FedEx trucks that go, come on my house are fairly large. And that there will be space for trucks to pull in and pull out.
I, I believe that we've created spaces here where fire trucks, emergency personnel and otherwise can get in them. I don't see any reason why a UPS truck or anybody else couldn't get in there.
Okay, and, um, most of the stuff I've, now I've talked about, um, I think at the last meeting, it was, uh, you said that there would be charging stations at the parking lot on the east side.
That is our plan.
What about charging stations on the west side?
Uh, I, I think it makes sense to, we're, we're going to attempt to do that. I, I'm a firm believer in not only solar wind, but also in, uh, the, like, the ascent of the electric vehicle.
So there will be a possibility of.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's better than a possibility.
Okay, well, that's good. Uh, that, I'm, I'm all for that also. What will that, I'm just curious now. With, we have charging stations, you then are actually taking away parking spaces, are you not, or no?
Um, we will determine a space that we're, will, that will work for that purpose.
Okay, so with that can be part of the conditions that, that charging stations will go in and, and the parking lots on the west side. Let's see. Uh, I think again, at the last meeting, it was, uh, mentioned about watering the plants on the, uh, around the parking lot. Is there any? Has that been set up? How those, those plantings will be taken care of? Wouldn't, we wouldn't want the plants to be simply be planted and, and dry up on us.
It's my understanding that we're not able to connect to a sprinkler system of any type. And hasn't, that has not happened for over fifty years in the, in the town. Um, so I'm not sure how we would do that. Obviously, I don't want to spend money and have it, uh, go for naught as well. But I'm not sure, um, whether we're allowed to connect to the public water supply for that purpose.
A connection, a connection can be made to the water supply for a spigot. Okay, and for that spigot to be used to connect the hose, the water, the plants handheld within the, uh, the regulations for the water pump. But the, a water connection cannot be made for an irrigation system. Um, it would have to be a separate, uh, well installed just for that purpose, uh, for that to take place. I, I believe a handheld hose, I think it would make sense to use, to have a water connection uh, to that parking lot area in one of the little green spaces in order to be able to have water accessible for a handheld hose.
Um, I, I, I'm not concerned about how it's done. I just want to make sure it is done, that's all. Whether it's handheld hose or sprinklers or, I don't know, anything, uh, would, would, needs to be done. It'd be senseless to put nice plantings in and all of a sudden, uh, have it dry up on us. And regarding plantings, I believe, uh, in Ms. Burke's comments, at one point, she said that screening would be in the back of the large, of the buildings would be screened by large trees. But the term large tree is undefined. I mean, how, how large will the plantings be behind the buildings for screening in terms of?
Where the, the, the landscape plan right in front of us has the caliper of all the trees on. They're, they're good sized trees. The, the elm, elm trees are three to four caliber, the, uh.
Yeah, I'm looking at that right now.
Green giant.
Yeah, the arborvitae is a seven to eight foot height.
Okay, so.
Installed.
Okay, I, I just want to make that clear. Then we're talking about the arborvitae going up seven or eight feet as, as they are actually installed.
Yes.
Okay. Um, probably not a, a problem in this area, but arborvitae tend to be delicacies for deer. You may want to consider arborvitae that are deer resistant. That, that's all.
She had, she has the placata on there, which is green giant. They're, they're pretty, they're probably the most deer resistant. Hotty. They, they're great.
Right, thank you. Um, the, uh, at the last meeting also, um, uh, first, I'm, I'm pleased to see solar panels going up, but I brought up the point that the solar panels would, would be, um, seen from the fourth floor. And that, uh, the question is whether those windows would open up. Then if they did open up, there'd be, uh, you may need a railing, uh, of some sort. Um, has that been looked at at all since the last meeting, the idea of the solar panels being seen by the four, four windows, residents? Anybody?
Let me check with, Kim, did you get that?
Oh, hey, they asked that question again. I'm sorry.
Question is, at the last meeting, I brought up the point that the solar panels on the buildings will be seen by the people on the fourth floor in the back. And that would, that there's potential issue with those panels in terms of glare on those people's windows. And tied in with that is if those are windows, if they can be open, those people could actually walk out onto the roof, the third floor roof. And thus, obviously a safety hazard. I mean, has anybody considered that?
I think we talked about putting solar panels on the fourth level, not on the third level. The third level was just to bring it down to street.
Okay, okay, so I, that, that's fine. So we're, we're just talking only for, for, for.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Ray, can I piggyback on it? So, so part, part of this process is on the west side. You know, as of right, they're under the special permit, thirty-eight units are, are, okay. But we have the ability to use a bunch, a host of density points and through a ZVA permit to go up, to go up sixty-seven. So why we're on the solar energy, I, I guess I have a question because I'm in the developers, I, just to better understand the developer's agreement. Uh, Mr. Pascal and, and Mr. Johnson and Mr. Clarkson, if you could answer it. Solar energy is, right now, on the, on the two big buildings in the middle. It's shown as future solar panels on both the three-foot roof and the four-foot roof. Um, and there's a pretty, yeah, well-defined line as to the, the, the limits of that solar. Is that still, is that still the case that solar will be on the third and the fourth floors or, or the entire building or just a section of the building now?
It, it will be on the, since we reduced the level of the third floor down, we would not put solar on that area and we, we keep it remaining on the four-story areas on both buildings.
Okay, and it's also, the last meeting, we mentioned that solar would just be on those two buildings. But future solar panels are shown on all four buildings. Is it just the two buildings? Or is it all four?
It was as proposed for the two large buildings.
Okay, so it's just, it's two, two buildings will have solar and it's just on the fourth floor.
That is correct.
So the hatch on the fourth floor, the, the, well, the, the walk-up staircase on the fourth floor. That will be removed and replaced with a hatch. I, I know the building inspector made a comment on that anyway, um, for height reasons.
I believe that's as you have previously requested, that the hatch, that the walk-up be removed and the hatch be, uh, replaced it with. So we're fine with that.
And the hatch won't impact any of the solar area? Any other uh board questions?
Yeah, let me just go back to uh. The one question that I'm only one that I ask, back to uh Larry. Are you there, Larry? Mr. Silva?
He stepped away.
Oh, okay, um Rebecca.
Yes.
You're better anyway.
Thanks.
At the last meeting.
Wait a minute, Larry's still on.
He is, he stepped away.
All right, now, um, you, at the last meeting, I mentioned to Larry. About the fact that the. Ground next to um Friendly's is mounded. And we sort of got nowhere with it because I don't think he understood me and I'm not sure I understood his response.
I, I am here, and I did hear your comment, Ray.
Okay, the only, the only reason I asked that question, Larry.
No, I didn't hear the question, but I heard the comment.
The question is the mom next to uh Friendly's. Which we, I brought up at the last meeting, and the only reason I brought that up. Was because. It looked like the house that was there was sitting on this mound. Now, if the mound is. Taken down even three feet, it looks like it's up four or five feet. The building comes down slightly also. Did you ever? Look at that? Spot?
Well, the answer I had given to you at the time was that the. The uh grade of the, of the buildings is consistent with what structures are now.
There is no.
Uh, well, where the structure was.
Right.
That was the actual building site that would, uh, that a structure was there. That was the building elevation. And we, we were holding to that similar elevation. For the replacement building. Uh, we, did we look, you're asking me, did we look to bring it down? Uh, we try, remember now, this, this area slopes. Uh, Broad Street has a, a significant slope to it. And we basically were following. That slope by stepping each one of these locations. And we have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I understand that, and I, I understand the problem that you're, you're bringing up. I'm just wondering. If you're walking down Broad Street to that building, are you gonna be stepping up to it in terms of steps going? I mean, I, we haven't seen a. What it's gonna look like. At the, from the front. I mean, it looks like it's gonna be higher than the sidewalk.
Whi- which building in particular you're talking about, seventy-six, seventy-eight?
Um.
Yes.
Yeah, the, right.
Do we have a um, a view of that from the front or from the site plan, either one?
Or will you be digging it down to street? Will you be digging the buildings down?
That's a good one.
That's my question, yeah.
If, if I read the plans correctly, there's a set of stairs going up to each building.
There is.
Set of stairs at the front, and then in the back, it's at that grade.
Right, the side, the sidewalk will be lower than the, yes.
So they're not built street level?
Yeah.
That's correct.
If I'm reading the plans correctly.
They, they are at the um. At, at the driveway, where the driveway is. Cause the, if you can see there, the, the. The grade at the street and the proposed grades are basically the same right in that area. That rim is seventy-four, four. Um. Seventy-five is right behind it, and then seventy-six. Is the next contour you see. Uh, where it's actually. We're, we are slightly raising that section of it right there, so seventy-six comes in. A few feet ahead of where it is now. A few feet closer to the, the Broad Street than it is now.
Can I add something to that? Folks, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So Ray, what's happening is that, at, at, on the left, if you're facing the buildings, on the left side of the buildings, it's basically flush. With the grade or very little difference. Because the street. Is, is obviously, it's going uphill from uh to the, to the south. Um, the right side of the building is gonna have a grade differential. Um, there's no way of making these all the same because of the hill. So each one of the buildings starts and ends on a different grade, about. Three to four foot difference of each building. So they step up the street the same as the road does.
Okay. Thank you. One last question for now, anyway. Um, maybe I missed it, but are there bike racks? On all these buildings and, and then the, what, and the uh. Parking lot on the east side?
I don't know, are they detailed on the uh landscape plan at all? Rebecca?
She has a detail for them, um. I don't know if we called out actual spots, but it would be in the. And I, and the idea to do it.
We need bike racks.
Mr. Chairman, if you look on the, the landscape plan.
Yeah, I see him on the second page.
Re- Rebecca's correct. I don't know that the specific locations for them are identified on the plan, but on the detail. For images and materials, it clearly delineates by, by racks.
Yeah, well, I think we need a detail on the plan.
Okay.
That you can certainly, obviously, condition, uh, make that one of the conditions.
Mr. Jimmy, any other question?
Just the. One quick question for clarification, I'm not sure whether. Ms Burke may wanna answer that, um. And actually. Two questions, one. The um. We did the residential count for parking spaces. The. Handicap spots are included, are they not?
They are.
So we're assuming that. I think we can assume that handicap spots in most cases will not be used at night. But they are being, they're counted in the, okay. Um. And.
There may be tenants, he may have tenants that are handicapped that may need a handicap space. I live in a, a building that has handicap spaces that are full all night and day, so.
Um, and lastly, uh. Well. The, I think the concept here in terms of um. Parking spaces or lack thereof is that the, the idea of shared parking between commercial and residential. How do we determine? Whether there's enough in terms of, how do you determine shared? Anybody can answer that. In other words, if we have X number of residential spaces and X number of commercial. And you add them together and we're, we're short as we are in this project. And we say, well, residential, well, that. At certain times, certain spots will not be used, that they'll be shared, not the residents in, at night and. Commercial possibly during the day. How do we determine that number?
You really, if I could answer that, uh, Mr. Chairman?
You show us the so.
Okay. Uh, right, I think that. The issue really is that we're a town. But. This particular area acts like an urban area. Okay, it acts more like a, like a city-type situation. And if you look at the other businesses along this stretch. Except for something like Cumberland Farms. Uh, which has parking within it. And that, the block of stores that are in there. Most of the stores in this area rely on street parking. And they, and if you look at them individually, you'd say. They don't have enough parking to function. Uh, you got the tavern up there, uh. Uh, the tavern up the street, the Greyhound Tavern, um, it does very well. But if you said, well, where is all the parking spaces dedicated for that? You won't find any. You won't find any, you'll find street parking. You may find that they use a neighboring. Parking lot, uh, that's not being utilized and it's. Being shared, whether or not it's the Walgreens one or something else. But. Uh, urban, urban-type businesses. Find a way. Hale Street will be used uh more than it is now. Um. Stetson probably will be used a little bit too. But. Parking will happen. Because. The businesses are ones that they. That, that are drawing these customers, and so. They will, maybe they will have to walk a little bit to get there and stuff. But you're never gonna have it in a, in an area like this. That you have parking spaces match. The, the uh commercial need. It's just not gonna happen that way.
That, that wasn't my question, though. I, I understand that, uh, and it doesn't match. I just wondered whether there's. Any way, any formula of determining. Whether the shared spaces are enough, that's all. And it, and what you're saying is, it's just a guess, we don't know.
There is no, I mean, I can sort of answer that, cause I had this conversation with the chairman last week. There is no formula, the, the planning board should make a. Judgment um based on the type of development, the area that it's located, and the parking provided. That the parking is sufficient for the. The buildings and the uses based on staff recommendation, engineering recommendation, um. You know, I think, given Mr. Silva's point that it's. Functions as an urban area, there's the parking lot going in across the street, you've got Hale Street, you've got Stetson Street. This project is close enough to the Spring Street lot that people could park there and walk up, so I think that there's plenty of. Off-site parking that would function as parking for this property, this project. Um, that I think the planning board could feel comfortable enough to allow the shared parking. I don't. Hmm, think that the planning board would have, should have any concern with that, but to answer your direct question, there is no specific formula, that's, that's not how this works.
Well. I do have concern, um, that I, I think that uh. Since we're, we're talking about people possibly using Hale Street and Stetson Street, and we're talking about. Residents there being impacted by, by the parking. And I understand that it's, it's not, uh, it's not some sort of uh formula that it's gonna. That you can use to determine. I'm just trying to get an idea of where we are in that. I guess my last question then, uh, Larry. Um. Do you know of any? Complex in the area? That has parking whereby people have to cross a busy street?
Well, you're talking to someone who in nineteen ninety-four. Did the restaurant right in, in sixty-sixty-two Broad Street, was Chenzo's Restaurant. And its parking was that parking lot across the street.
Which one?
And that was never an issue when that was a restaurant.
I'm talking about residents.
Residents, you're saying?
Right, right, you know, a complex, residential complex. I'm not talking about a restaurant. Yeah, I'm just wondering whether, whether there's, you have any. Knowledge of anything in. Southeastern Mass that has something like that.
I can't speak to southeastern Mass, but I used to live in one in central Mass that had it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can I get some board questions? If, if there are.
I, I, I have a couple, just. Just as, you know, we're working on revitalizing the rest of the main street and town of Broad Street. One of my questions is your, your light posts that you're submitting for the, for the project. And has that been considered that, that's the light post that's gonna probably go all the way up to the center of town, or is that just gonna be the light post in this area? The consistency and looks.
That's.
Uh, Rebecca, Rebecca can answer that, I think.
Um, I know the light posts were planned for onsite, um. We would probably wanna match the streetlights to whatever the town requires within the street.
Exactly, yeah.
And then my, my other, my other question is about your snow removal plan. Uh, where, where parking is becoming like real and a real uh subject on this. If I read it correctly, that you would be. Taking snow from one side of the street and dumping it on the other side of the street, should there be too much snow? And you would lose. All the parking spaces on one side of that lot, is that correct?
Pretty much if it's a sizable storm. And then if it becomes problematic, um, because you've lost too much. Of that parking, then you have to find an off-site location. To use a loader, put it on trucks and take it elsewhere.
Uh. But I would say if you're gonna hire a loader to bring it across the street to create more of a parking problem, why couldn't you guys just haul it off-site and? Get rid of the parking before even, before it even happens.
Uh, I think that's, well, I, I agree with you in one sense, but. But you can also look at it as a, a storm-by-storm kind of case, because. If you're in a period of time when there's uh. Very cold temperatures. There's a pattern of storms that you're expecting. Then I think that you're gonna have one way of dealing with it. Versus you got uh, a, a storm and now you got a few warm days that are gonna come after that. And then you know that it's only a temporary situation. So, um. I don't think there's one solution fits all for snow removal. I don't know, there's never a good one.
Larry, I would add to that, that um, that you would also, um, you would have less occupants looking for those parking spaces. In a snowstorm or in, in really detrimental weather, it just, it, it's just typical, that's all. You'd have less people. Who would wanna be using the, uh, or, or, or visiting the businesses and such, so I think those spaces will remain open, but to your point. On a storm-by-storm basis would be uh typical, and you'd remove it if you had to.
Right. I mean, it's twenty, it's twenty parking spaces that you'd be losing, and I think that's. I think that's a lot, and I, I think that once, I, I would agree, you know, it's a couple storms, that's fine, but if you see it start to build up, I, I would encourage you to remove it.
Yeah, or it's going to be loss of those spaces for. Up more than a couple of days or three days, then, then you wanna look to, for, for removing it, so you don't. Have that situation prolonged any further.
Right. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Any other board questions on the site? Or in general, Mr. Greeno?
Yes, please. Um, yes, in regard to the parking too. Um, I was thinking. Under the present circumstances where there are a lot of people. Working at home. Those parking spaces aren't gonna be given up, obviously. And then, um. The idea that. We are a commuter. Town too, and we, the train is right there. The likelihood is the residents would probably walk over to the train. As opposed to it'd take them longer to drive over and drive back. And pay for the train parking. So. You might as well figure these are residential parking spaces. Now also, um, with Steve's response to the, in terms of the snow. Is no on-street. Night parking. So it would be. I think those parking spaces in the parking lot. Would become very important. So just keep that in mind.
The, the, the first part of your question, though. June, is that you're saying would people be working from home?
Well, they work.
Yeah, the benefit of that is there's less traffic, isn't it?
Yeah, but I mean, you know, they won't be taking their cars, and then if they're working in Boston. They're not gonna take their car, they're most likely gonna just walk over to the train.
It's still a good walk to, to college, though.
It's not that far. My daughter walks from her house in Annaborough down to the train every day. I mean, it's, it's not that far. It's less than walking from my house down to the center, which is over a mile.
I agree with you, in good weather, it'll be fine, but in cold and rain and snow, maybe not.
Yeah, but if they have to pay dollars to park. They wanna leave it at home.
Good point.
You know, they're just, you know, just figure they are residential parking spaces.
Remember, if their cars are there, then the, the area is not getting snowed on.
Hmm.
Oh, it's, it's, you're clearing the right, you're, you're clearing the roadways in essence throughout the parking lots.
I have, I have a couple of questions, but I don't wanna cut anybody else off from the board, so. McDonald's?
I have no questions this time, thank you.
All right, so, um, just for the, the development team, just, I wanna make sure I clearly understand. Um, you know, before we deliberate on this, what. What the density bonuses are and what we can expect, um. For mitigation, so. Um, I think the first, I think the first one's pretty clear, and I just, I just wanna. Make sure we're all on the same page, so. Um. The first one is either a payment of three hundred and fifty-two thousand or. the first one is either a payment of three hundred and fifty-two thousand or acquisition of the property on Bedford Street, which is adjacent to the Academy Building. And that payment would occur prior to the first occupancy permit, correct?
I don't have that. We've had so many iterations of that, Patrick, of the developers agreement. No, that's no.
Well, I just, I just want to make, so that's, that is that something we, I mean, because that's four or five units. So then that gets complicated later on. Are we giving you four? We giving you five ones that could take it away? The market value of that property is probably five greater than three fifty. So I guess what I'm asking, you know, not to play games, is this, you know, should we, should we be looking at the three fifty-two? Are you really going to try to go and buy that house and turn it over to the town or or what? Just so we can try to finalize the density, that's all.
I think that as that reads is probably sufficient, whether it goes, whether we're able, the longest, unfortunately, the length of time that it's taken to to get this to the table has, obviously, they're in a different position today. So it's probably that those dollars instead. It's probably that's, I would imagine that's going to be.
That's just a cash payment. There's no strings attached. That's, you know, for the for the four units, it's the three hundred and fifty-two thousand, correct?
It's four units plus the commercial space. That's correct. Now, I would, my, I don't want, because of the last meeting, we, we, it was suggested that the parking lot also be conditioned on that before the first CO is done. That makes that first, that makes that first building, which is a very small one, an extremely expensive scenario. So I don't want to do both of them at the same time. So I would, I would just suggest that you folks can determine which one makes sense on the first one. I'm okay either way, but I would suggest that it be one or the other on that first one. One, the second one should be on the second building.
All right, so, so the, I guess, all right, so the parking lot is separate, I guess, because the parking lot is needed for the project. So let me just go.
Not in the infancy, though, Patrick, not in the infancy. It does, it's not needed for that first building.
Well, my, I mean, my only concern is, and just my only concern is that we're going to have four parking spaces plus one handicapped for a four-unit building with commercial. You may need that parking lot.
No.
Okay, well, we can come back.
Yeah, I'm happy to have, actually, I was going to this, no problem.
So the next one is a payment by the developer for three hundred and fifty thousand. Basically, to be used on the town common to restore the War Memorial and other other things. So that's three hundred and fifty. If the War Memorial costs eighty, we can use the other two seventy to beautify the common, correct?
It was, it was an amount up to three hundred and fifty, I think it says, an amount up to up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get that done per the architectural drawing. So I'm going to follow the plan of that, that plan that was prepared, that has been referenced throughout. And and hopefully I can get it done for that, quite frankly.
Well, I think, I think in the latest edition of the developers, so what we asked Michael Dutton all along, and I think you folks worked on this, is to get rid of the up to. So we know exactly what we're voting on. So I think, I think the payment was changed to an amount of three fifty to an amount of three fifty-two.
Okay.
Is that correct?
I'm okay with that.
So the third, the third one, the third one, and this is where there's some confusion at the last meeting. So the third one references a payment of three hundred and fifty thousand for the purposes of streetscape and references an attachment E, okay? So attachment E is simply some photos of of a street with pictures of trees and stone walls, et cetera, with no real scope of work and what's going to happen. And what I see in your plan is primarily to benefit your plan. And we have to demonstrate that, that, you know, this isn't the greater public good and determine that. So if this were any other development, a subdivision, and the sidewalks are going to be impacted disgreatly due to curb cuts and utility cuts and widenings and trying to connect a property across the street. In my opinion, what's on your plan is part of the project and the mitigation of three fifty would be to further enhance Broad Street beyond that. Am I incorrect in thinking that or correct?
So let me take a stab at that one, Mr. Chairman, because after you raised those concerns at the last meeting, the Mr. Pascal and I had a follow-up subsequent discussion with Ms. Burke and with Mr. Dutton. And what I would suggest is that the reality is a combination, what you're suggesting and what we had discussed with the town, because you're correct, under a normal project, there may be some restoration or if there were disturbance of public assets, sidewalks and things like that, they would be fixed. But what we're talking about here is actually enhancements. And so things like bump outs and you know, the flashing lights that we heard about earlier tonight. And so my, I will provide my impression of the conclusion of that meeting is that there was a consensus that the three hundred and fifty thousand is really for both. It's for enhancements to that area that for the project would not occur and other impacts of the project on the area. So what we believe is that when the time comes, we will be directed by the town to to make improvements that they think are necessary as as part of this project. And and we discussed, and this is important, that the the developer would, with obviously appropriate easements and permissions from the the town, would would conduct those improvements. And that's important because the developer can do it at a cost far less than the town. And so the value of those improvements actually, in in real dollars, exceeds three hundred and fifty thousand.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Look, I just ask a follow-up question. So.
I'm sorry.
So what's what's on this plan now? As far as redoing the concrete, the bump out to connect the lot across the street and the beautification in front of the buildings, from my perspective, is something that we would ask for anyway, to create a safe environment for the, for the, for the project, because your traffic study says that, you know, anytime you do a project like this, you have to make the entrances ADA compliant. You have water lines coming, major water lines coming through the sidewalks that has to be repaired. You're opening the curb cuts to access the buildings. That's, that's being repaired. The bump outs in the crosswalk are simply to connect you to non-contiguous fossils, so to, so to speak. So I guess I'm trying to, and I think it's messy when we, you know, I think it's clean if you guys do this work and then we get a check for three fifty. And then, and then the town can direct, you know, private people, whoever they decide to hire to expand upon what you're doing for this project. And I, I think that's the, that's, that's where we get to the benefit of the, the whole town or the public at large and not, not just focusing on the project. So.
Can I add something to that, Mr. Chairman? So what would typically occur is if we were connecting water, we might open a four-foot wide gap in the sidewalk out to the street. In this case, we have suggested that we would replace sidewalks. That, of course, is a benefit to the town. So it's significantly better than just returning the area of this, of the sidewalk to its former condition and not having to do the whole thing. You typically wouldn't replace all of the sidewalks unless you had to blow up all of the sidewalks throughout the course of construction. That's typical. So I think that, as Mr. Clarkson said, that this does cross boundaries on both sides. So I guess we, we could certainly have that discussion further and trying to, to close the gap there. It's not a question of, I'm just going to do it all and give you guys three hundred and fifty grand. I think there's some crossover, as Troy said.
So I think that the impact, the impact that's here is, you know, basically in traffic study, you have to make them all ADA compliant. You have to have connection points across the street. There's going to be a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done. I, I think it would be within the board's purview to condition it that the sidewalks have to be completely redone along the frontage of your property. So I guess I just need to weigh out if that if we're, if we're looking at six units for that benefit, so to speak. I don't really know what the benefit is. And it's easy to weigh if I know we're getting a check for three fifty and the town can do what it needs to do to expand upon what you're doing. Because I, because I think what's proposed in this plan is project-specific and things that we'd ask for anyway. So.
I, if I may?
Mr. Jimmy, go ahead.
I would concur with the chair on this wholeheartedly. And I just want to, and that's just me, and I apologize for maybe speaking out, but I just want to respond again to Mr. Clarkson regarding the developers agreement. I think I've been consistent since the first meeting is that this board does not have to follow the developers agreement. And when I don't look at it as a as something that's required at all. It may be a guide in some way. But when the, when you, when the idea of a developers agreement is brought up to me, I just I whistle at it because I wasn't involved in it. It was something that is, that was done outside the the purview of the planning board, which is the, by law, the the board that does approve projects like this. So I did, it may be I'm being irrational, but it bothered me when, when, when you use developers agreement as a as a reason for going a particular way. That's all.
For a matter of explanation, the, with, I, I understand that, we understand the authority and the autonomy of the planning board. The developers agreement, though, is required in the ordinance. And so because it's been negotiated between the developer and the town, we have relied on it to guide the, the way we're headed with the project, but we fully recognize the authority of the planning board to ultimately make the decision.
And then the solar energy, Mr. Clarkson, in your memo, you reference six additional units for the solar energy?
Yes.
And according to section nineteen point zero four, we can only allow one unit on a building that has a solar roof. So in order to comply with the zoning, we could only grant two in that, in that category.
Why did we spend all this time working on a developers agreement?
Well, I'm not, I, I don't. I'm just asking the question because I pointed this out several times, that it's still saying six. So I'm trying to figure out. I'm just asking, that's why I asked earlier, there four roofs or the two roofs? What, what are there for roofs? So.
So I, when we originally discussed that and did the, the negotiation of the developers agreement with the town manager, there were additional placements of solar panels. And, and so as the project has progressed, there have been some adjustments, as we saw here tonight. I mean, we certainly would be open to discussions about the placement of additional solar panels to get that density bonus count back up to where it originally was in the discussions with the town. Or as the town manager explained to us, the density bonus memo was just suggested as a guide. These were all originally included in the developers agreement. But this memo was intended just to be a guide to the board. There are other density bonus provision.
Right, I think there's other way, I think there's other ways around it, but I just want to be.
In the ordinance.
Can I, can I just, Mr. Chairman, just a quick add to that, is that I think that when you talk about putting solar on a roof, that would probably be considered as a single-family, maybe a two-family home. The significant amount of the, of the roof structure on each of these large buildings still is very, very large. And so I think it's significantly more than perhaps you're, the one that you may be alluding to. So just a thought then.
Correct, but I just, we have to follow the zoning. Like I said, I think there's other ways around it to get, to get the density. But I just wanted to be clear that it's two buildings, fourth floor. And that, in that category, we can only ask for two units. Am I correct on that, Ms. Beck?
According to the zoning, it is one per roof, one unit per roof that has solar panels.
All right. Any other board, I don't want to take up the time. So I just want to go through things I had written down. Any other board questions? All right, so we went, we went through the walk-up staircase. That's okay with the developer, correct?
That is correct. Will be a hatch accessed by ladder.
You know, and obviously with the, the parking concerns and everything else and the zoning downtown, only allowing for one and two bedrooms. You know, we'd like to have rooms labeled as dining rooms, have a five-foot clear opening. That's okay with the developer?
That is as, as, yes, five foot wide. That's it. It's a normal door height, five foot wide. That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the applicants before we open it to public comment?
Oh, yes, please. Just for my clarification more. The transfer of development rights is to provide a significant benefit to the town or to the public at large. And the solar, just how does that work into benefiting the town or the public?
Well, the solar, I'd say the solar is separate, but, but the, the transfer of development rights, they could answer that question.
Yeah, so the, the solar isn't part of the transfer of development rights. Under the the zoning, there are allowed density bonuses for solar installations. The transfer of development rights, you can grant that for a public benefit and the public benefit identified is public parking in the parking law on Law A.
Okay, all right.
Any other board questions before I open it to the public?
Yeah, I, I got one. Is there any? I'm just looking at your, your nice elevations of the buildings. And I noticed that, I know the first floor is all retail.
Commercial.
What, what is commercial? Or what are your plans for signage? Are you going to create some type of sign guidelines and so they're all pretty much look the same? You know, I'd really hate to see different multicolor signs go on these buildings.
Yeah, that's, that's not going to happen. We would never, I would never allow that. I think it's, it's very important to have a consistent look and feel throughout those buildings. And whatever we do for one, you won't see neon, you won't see fluorescent, you won't see, you'll see some sort of attached board sign for what these are. And I think they'll be consistent for what a, a small town wants to see on their commercial presentations.
Okay.
So just back to the transfer of development rights, just, I'm just trying to make sure we are, we're on the same page. So the deed restriction would, would prohibit any further development other than for the purposes of parking and open space in perpetuity. We'll grant the town of Bridgewater an easement for the purposes of parking and open space in perpetuity. And it will incorporate a mechanism into the deed that should the property be abandoned for a period of twelve months or more, how the town could obtain it for a dollar. The park can actually be built to the approved plan and maintained in perpetuity. And the successors owners of DE and F, the deed restriction shall be approved by the town attorney prior to recording, subject to any partial releases to be obtained by the, the applicant. That's all agreed upon, correct?
Yes, I would just like to add one thing, Mr. Chairman, that I think it's important for the board to know that it's almost another level of mitigation because initially that parking lot was thought to have just been necessary to resurface it and that there was recent drainage situations that were confirmed as being acceptable. Now we determine that it is not, and it's probably going to be a multi-hundred-thousand-dollar proposition to put that into the condition of what the town now needs or is requesting. I would just simply say that that's another level of benefit that I think the town is getting for the parking, for the downtown parking area that we are paying for. And I think that that's, I don't want that to go unnoticed. So I think it's important to also make reference of that. That almost is almost as akin to saying it's another mitigation value that I'm supporting now that I will have no future development rights to that property. will have no future development rights to that property.
I mean, but the parking itself was a mitigation already proposed. So, I mean, but it's making that usable.
No, it's, it would be usable just by resurfacing it. The, and, and then of course, we're going to put walls in front and plant things and trees and that, that I was fine with. But all I'm saying is that it has become significantly more expensive as a result of the recent necessary upgrades as requested by the town. That's all I'm saying. That was never discussed. It was never thought. It was never, it has come to recent, probably since the end of December, early January is when this all came to light.
I, I also think it's part of the overall project and it's needed for parking for the product. So I, I, I think it's treated as the same as the parking on D E N F. So, and there's no, no parking on lot G. So. All right. So do we have any other, um, board comments, questions before we turn? I'd like to get final public comments if possible.
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to just wrap up with, uh, Mr. Chairman when we're all said and done here.
All right, absolutely, Mr. Pascal. We'll, we'll lay it at the end and try to come to some consensus before we deliberate. So, um, Ms. Burke, I have a problem. My Zoom, I can only see Mr. Pascal. So I can't see if, if there is.
I can let you know.
So before, before I open it up to public comment, we did receive, I believe, five, um, letters, two, we have requests to read into the record, one from Mrs. Hanson and one from Mr. Colum Bodas. Um, the others were received by, I believe, Mr. Godchak and Mr. Candido. We do have those. If they would like us to read them into the record, they could ask. Otherwise, the board members all have those. So, um, before we open it up to, um, the public comment, would my two volunteers, please read, um, Mrs. Hanson's letters that she asked and Mr. Colum Bodas's, please.
I have them, Mr. Chairman. I had to, uh, pull them out from my cabinet. It was sitting here.
And I don't, maybe I have something wrong. There are three letters from Mrs. Hanson. I, I don't know if they were just.
I have, um, I have in front of me two. One dated, one stated, uh, March twenty second, one stated March twenty first. I may have missed one in the packet. I'll read the two I have. The, uh, March twenty second one.
Relax.
Wait, I mean, actually, let me start with the March twenty first, because the twenty second is an addendum. Says to the town of Bridgewater Planning Board. Once again, I'm writing to express some of my concerns with the proposed development on street sixty eighty-six by Westport Realty. I realize the planning board may close the public hearing on this matter at the next meeting, so I want to add more thoughts that may or may not have been considered. At this point, it is the density of this project and the effects on the traffic in the parking, along with the height that are the main concerns. Pro's number of parking spaces is one thirty-one, which indicates lot A on the, on the east side. It was discussed at the last meeting that, that would, that they would require to have eighty-nine parking spaces on the west side with proposed four buildings. They said that lot A has forty-eight spots. If you had done my math correctly, one thirty-one minus forty-eight equals eighty-three, there will be short six parking spaces. Excuse me. On top of this, besides residence parking spots and one per unit and one for every three units for visitors, they haven't specified where the employees of the proposed buildings will park, never mind the shoppers. And what about the two bedroom units? Are they only allowed one car? In addition, I've not heard about handicap spaces. How will they fall into the equation? If you reduce the number of units to the allowed number of fifty-four before zoning board, before zoning board okayed up to thirty-seven and keep the proposed number of parking spaces, if not more, then it would be less pressure to accommodate the required number of spots needed. There was discussion of people parking on the street, which is fine. But I would feel that the residents of the units should not be expected to park on the street and employees won't, wouldn't be able to either, especially if there's a time constraint on the street parking space. It was mentioned to me by the, by a counselor that there has been thoughts on having employees park in the Spring streets, Spring Street lot, which is not very reasonable. They would have to walk quite a distance, cross the train track, et cetera. If they are working nights such as a restaurant, restaurant employee, they would not be very secure when it is dark and never mind snowing. We suggested to have a buddy to walk with. It was also mentioned that developer feels that during the day, shoppers would be able to use the residence parking spaces because most would be out working, it wouldn't need the spot under five until five P M. This is not reasonable. First of all, they are assuming when the people work, excuse me, first, first of all, they are assuming when the people work, when the business will be open until and when the residents will be returning home. Also, what about the weekends? Are they expected, are they expecting businesses on the first floor will not be open on weekends? Certainly, the residents will be more likely to be home then too. So what happens then? And what about a resident who goes out to shop or run an errand and then comes back to no longer find the parking space to park in? They expect them to park in lot A, lug their groceries wherever across the street. And parking on the street is not reasonable for them either. They should be able to expect to park where they live. I suggested the last meeting that they have, that they have a signed parking lot spot and signs that say the spot reserved for residents of complex only. You can do that for the businesses. Everyone is expected or hoping that a restaurant goes in one of these buildings, which is fine, but that type of business will, will, will have the most need for parking. It will be open longer hours than at least six days a week. You cannot expect that the residents will put up with these spaces being taken up by shoppers and customers and patrons will expect, will expect parking close to the establishment. It has been said that the street parking hasn't been utilized much from friendlies down to Stetson Street. Well, that is not unexpected since presently there isn't anything along the way that anyone would want to park for their four. But even with the proposed lot A and utilizing these spaces, those spaces, there still is not a realistic amount of parking available for everyone. Residents of complexes, employees slash business owners, customers and handicap spaces are all needed. There are short six spaces as it is. We use the density, make the buildings a little smaller and keep the number of parking spaces as proposed and less more parking spaces can, that can be added reasonably. It's always better to have extra spaces than too little. Trafficking in and out will be increased. And I know there's been discussion on crosswalks. I do not suggest to have, to not use the same pedestrian signs currently on the Commons Crosswalk. I found that the, those yellow lights on the streets are blinding to the driver at night and I can't see the pedestrian trying to cross because it is distracting. I go slowly through there and I'm wary to keep my eyes open as a good driver should, but I feel that that type of warning sign is detrimental. Better lighting at the crosswalk and less distraction to the driver would be a suggestion. I do hope the heights of the buildings are reconsidered with the bulkheads, as discussed in the last meeting briefly, will be removed since they'll be, they'll bring the proposed heights to a greater, to greater than forty-five feet foot limit. So in conclusion, please reconsider the density of the buildings, number or lack of available parking spaces for everyone, including handicap spots and the traffic lighting involved. Thank you for your hard work and I appreciate the planning board time in all of this. Now rushing through this is the best way to proceed despite pressure from some to push it through. Best to look at everything closely so there's nothing to regret down the road. Again, thank you, Janet Hanson. Her addendum letter is dated the March twenty second. Hello, I forgot to, to include these observations or questions. What about delivery trucks and trash trucks? How will those be handled? Will there be adequate space for them? What about the trash trucks going back onto the Broad Street? But hope that there has been thought of when planning the entrances and exits into the individual parking lots, but I haven't heard mention of them either. Also, as far as the handicap spaces, well, they are spaces not just for customers, but for tenants also. Those spaces are larger and I did not hear, as I mentioned below, about them at the meeting. Answers to these questions in the next meeting, which I know, which I now know it will be on, on April seventh, we'd much appreciate it. Again, I agree that some, something needs to be done in the area, but it's been done carefully. Bigger is not necessarily better. And if the size could be reduced, it would be fit much better. And ease a lot of minds. Thank you, Janet Hanson. Okay, lastly, uh, letter from, uh, Peter Colum Bodas. This is dated today. Mr. Chairman, I'm writing to share my thoughts in a special grant application for sixty slash eighty-eight Broad Street that is currently before you. I wholeheartedly support the prospect of mixed-use development on our central business district. At the same time, feel that it's important for the planning board to act with the utmost consideration and care. Project is the first to apply under our relatively new used zoning provisions. The approval of this project will set an important precedent for how the planning board will exercise its permit granting authority for the mixed-use projects going forward. Simply put, I believe the project as proposed is far too dense. It squeezes every last bit of density allowance from the code in an area that is not built to accommodate it. Broad Street already routinely suffers from vehicle backups. The plan compounds this congestion problem by citing forty-eight parking spaces required by the project across Broad Street, creating an unnecessary risk to life and limb. Mixed-use zoning is a powerful tool. If implemented wisely and with an eye towards avoiding, avoiding negative impacts, it can help restore the economic, social vibrance of a downtown. We are too hasty in granting authority to develop mixed-use projects. However, we will live to regret for decades. There's no rush. Let's get this right. Sincerely, Peter Colum Bodas. That's it.
So we did receive other letters from Mr. Candido. I don't know if you want to put that up. We can, doesn't have to be read, but just to acknowledge that we received it. And the board has seen it. Every, the board members got this, just in spite of the record and, um, there was, I believe, another from Mr. Uh, Godchak, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And if they, and on, they can request to read them or if they.
I believe either one of them are on.
Oh, we have.
Plus they're on the phone.
Okay, so we received that for power public correspondence. Um, I'd open it now, Ms. Burke. I'm having a problem with Zoom, so I can't.
That's fine. I can let you know. Um, so Dr. Hunt, um, would like to speak, so I just asked him to unmute.
Um, just checking my sound. Are you hearing me, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for, uh, this interesting discussion tonight. I think we're really close. Also, I, uh, I have to note that I think the planning board has been very circumspect and extremely patient with the developer in terms of getting this go forward. Yes, the developers agreement is in the, our code. But yes, the planning board has the final say. I hope the planning board can actually close this hearing to the public tonight and get into the discussion on the, um, conditions. I, uh, think that the planning board has been deeply accommodating to the developer, given the fact that seven years ago, a plan was, uh, provided, withdrawn. And we only recently got the final, uh, site plans for the public to go over and hear about. Um, further, I think the basic units at thirty-eight on the site, um, is now moved to sixty-seven from an unfortunate Zillen boarding appeals approval that has significant ramifications down the road. For example, we've set precedent now for another developer to, to claim the same thing, that these are contiguous when they're not. That said, I think the fact that it could go up to sixty-seven units, uh, my bottom line is I think that's too much, but I think there are, uh, potential ways to, uh, get around, get a better piece. We talked about the parking lot. Those were issues raised tonight that I really don't, uh, completely, had not completely comprehended. Um, and I think the town has been more than accommodating uh, to the developer and asked that he could port with our rules and regulations and have given quite a bit of ground in terms of accommodation. So that said, um, I could live with something on the order of, uh, units somewhere around fifty-eight to sixty-one, something like that. I just heard that the solar, uh, would have to lose four of the six that were in a letter somewhere. Um, so that somewhat, uh, consistent with what my thinking that it would be. Um, I think we heard that the bedroom count, uh, would have to be correct. Uh, certainly, I think the dining room areas have to have a wide opening to ensure that it's not a simple bedroom use. And the final thing, uh, I would ask is, is that, uh, long ago, we, several of us commented on a single entry into that property basically across from Hale Street. Uh, it's unfortunate that those, uh, buildings, like they told, told us in the army, closed ranks, those weren't closed up a little bit to actually provide one point of access and egress, uh, at Hale Street. I think that's water under the bridge. Uh, I totally support the single crosswalk location. I think, uh, the town engineer has given us a very good uh, point to help make it safer down in that area for crossing. That's been of the major, one of the major safety issues that I've raised. But, uh, basically, um, I have a potential solution from the solar issue. Uh, I will state that a recent study came out and said that the preferred place in Massachusetts right now for solarizing is on already developed ground, i.e. buildings, parking lots, et cetera. I'll leave it at that, uh, to say I'm, uh, looking forward to, uh, the planning board being able to move this project forward. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to speak?
So there's nobody with their hand raised. Um, and there's nobody who has sent me a chat. Um, Jasmine had to step away from her computer for a second. So if you've sent Jasmine a chat that you want to speak, please send me a chat. So I know that you would like to speak as well. But this time I don't see anybody. Oh, wait, we have Nicholas Paler, Palermo, I guess. Um, I'll unmute you. You're all set.
How are you this evening?
Could you just state your name and address to the record, sir?
Uh, so my name is Nicholas Palermo. I am the owner of Greyhound Tavern located at thirty-nine Broad Street in Bridgewater. And just wanted to partake real quick, um, and give my support for Mr. Pascal in this project, um, being a local business owner for the past three years. Um, I think that I as long, as well as many others, um, hope to see a continued development of the town of Bridgewater and the revitalization of Bridgewater Center. Um, I think this would be a fantastic start to get us, uh, in that, that right, you know, step in the right direction. Um, I, I do understand there are some, some concerns, but like I said, being a local business owner and you know, being somewhat successful the past couple of years, um, I think that unfortunately where we're currently at is, you know, the, the eyesore, um, is, is what I unfortunately have to call it across the street from my restaurant. Um, I think it's, it's time for, to really to make it, you know, a more inviting neighborhood. Uh, I think this would be a great step in the right direction. Um, and then hopefully this would, you know, trigger a little more uptown and, you know, the common area, uh, that you have talked about and and kind of making hopefully at some point, you know, a destination area. Um, I look at, you know, certain places, people say, you know, where'd you go Saturday night? They, they, well, I went to the north end. And it's a, a destination area and I'd like to see that, you know, Bridgewater eventually it's, hey, well, you know, we went to the center. Those places for families, you know, ice cream for the kids or, you know, my restaurant or if there's other opportunities for other, you know, restaurateurs, I, I think that that would be only something that would be, you know, beneficial for all, all parties involved, uh, especially the residents of the town. So that is, that is my two cents. I appreciate you guys' willingness to take the time to speak. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Uh, Nick Palmary. You have to unmute yourself, sir.
And, um, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Nick Palmary, uh, very similar to Nick Palermo. Um, I'm, uh, I live at thirty-six Dartmouth Road, um, in town and, um, I, I own a piece of property just on the other side of the Common, um, on, uh, the tip of Summer Street. Um, have for some years, I have my business there. Uh, and I just finished twenty-two years as the president of the Bridgewater Business Association. And I, I, I know that the planning board will do the right thing with this and I, I, I support the effort um, of, of this kind of a scenario there. Um, I think one of the things that we oft heard, um, from businesses that would join our association, we're talking about the town of Bridgewater is they would move in if we could bring in more business to help them as well as to make the downtown a more walking, uh, uh, more vitality within that center. And I know that, uh, we've been discussing the, um, the resurgence of the downtown for, uh, more years than I can count. So this, I think, will probably be a really great way of getting things going down there. I think it will bring some vibrancy there. Uh, certainly, uh, for any of the businesses that are down there, plus the, the, the people of the community, not even considering the fact that you. Not even considering the fact that you have Bridgewater State University that will, in the future, have their students back on campus. And when they do, it's another place for, I, I think, the, the students to see what the center of the town of Bridgewater really can offer. So I just wanted to add my support to this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else at this time.
All right, so any other board comments or questions at this point? I just, I, I want to go back to the, the mitigation money, because we throw the number around at over a million bucks, and I just want to make sure that that's what I'm voting on, so. The three fifty-two for the house, I think that's pretty clear cut. That's, that's a payment. The three fifty for the memorial, for the, for the memorial downtown, I think the three fifty is fair. But I want to make sure that if the memorial only costs sixty or seventy grand, we have the ability to use that throughout the common. And that's why I wanted that amount of up to removed, and I, I know we brought this up to, up several times. Am I correct in assuming that, Mr. Pascal, Mr. Clarkson, the three fifty is for the common, it will be three fifty? It won't be a dollar more, it won't be a dollar less?
Yes, if, if, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Pascal.
I'm sorry. So if it's, if it winds up being a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'll, we'll cut a check for the difference.
But that's where I'm confused. The, the, the check is come, when, when we have the, the mitigation payments, you're cutting a check to, to the town for three fifty, and then they're going to engage and have the work done under their control in the common, correct?
Okay, that's not what was discussed, but I'm okay with that as well.
Ms. Burke?
No, I believe, I can't speak for Mr. Dutton, he's not here, but I believe the, that Mr. Dutton and Mr. Pascal had agreed that Mr. Pascal would do the work, because he can do it for a lower cost than the town can provide the work. So I think Mr. Pascal will engage someone to do the work at his cost, and then he just agreed to provide a check for the additional amount if it's less than three hundred and fifty.
That's correct, with receipt.
Chairman, I, I concur with that, and I would just suggest perhaps that the, the, in your conditions, you can write that the work will be done by the developer as directed by the town up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that if, as you suggested, Mr. Chairman, the, the town manager or other parties want to expand the scope of that work and take advantage of the fact that, as Jennifer said, Mr. Pascal can do it probably far more cheaply than the town could, then you can certainly condition your decision accordingly.
I mean, I just think to keep it clean, I'd rather have, you know, the way it's written in a developer's agreement, it's the checks will be cut three fifty, three fifty-two will be cut, three fifty will be cut, three fifty will be cut. I mean, I, I, I think it's much cleaner, you know, Mr. Pascal could sell some of these buildings. I just, I, I think for, for me, I, personally, I think that the way I always understood it, and I thought Ms. Burke and I understood the same way, the town would do the work. The town would hire to have the work done. The three fifty-two, the three fifty, and the three fifty was for the town to perform the work in town.
Mr. Chairman, is, the agreement was exactly as Ms. Burke outlined. That was into numerous discussions. That was the agreement.
And, and, and that's a better deal, as, as I noted, for the town, because.
So what's, if, if the board wanted Mr. Pascal to just cut the checks, what's the difference to Mr. Pascal? If the amount's going to be the same anyway?
I think it's your prerogative. I'm just suggesting that's the way we agree to do it. So if that's your pleasure, if that's the pleasure of the board, then I think that's something you, you have to determine.
Okay, and then.
That's not what we agreed to, but again.
I, I just think it, having a private individual doing work on a public, I, I just think that gets too, too messy and too hard to track and control and, and everything else. I, I think it's much cleaner if we get the money and we do the work. And we can, if we have to, we can change design, we can expand upon design, things of that nature.
Okay, again, I think that's the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, that's your prerogative, Mr. Chairman.
So the, the, the one I'm hung up on is the, is the streetscape stuff. So what I see on your plan is one member I would want as part of the project. Are you saying you're unwilling to do what's on this, on the, on the plan, both the landscape and the site plan? And not do the three fifty? Are you, are you willing to do what's on the plan and do the three fifty?
I think there was some crossover. I think that there was, as I, we had suggested just a, a little bit ago, that there's definitely some crossover as to what that, what was mitigation and what was going to be required by the project. Again, connecting water, connecting water would allow me to dig a trench four feet wide, and I could put that block back, and it would, it would be returning the street and the sidewalk to its original condition. That would be acceptable. So it's, that, that's what I would suggest.
Right, but it's, like I said, it's not just those trenches, it's the curb cuts, it's the curving, it's the ADA access, it's the bump outs, all things that you need to, to do to achieve your, your project. I personally, I, I, I mean, I, I think the three fifty is, is needed in addition to that work, but.
Mr. Chairman, there's some gray area here. Can we, can, can condition the, the decision, as we've discussed, and, and allow discretion for the, the town engineer and the town manager to determine what is essential to the project and what is our streetscape improvements? And then, you know, at, at that time, that decision can be made?
Well, I like to know what I'm voting. Personally, I like to know what I'm voting on, not leave it up to people after we vote. I, I think that if roughly a million fifty is proposed to mitigation, and that's what we're voting on, that's what we should get, what's done on the plan should be done as part of the project.
Again, there's some gray area, though, Mr. Chairman. There's, there's some parts that should be, that you may consider to be mitigation or, and, and I may see it as a, a part of the project or reverse. And so I, I, I think that there's a, a fair amount of that, and, and based upon your recent discussions. So I, I would, I would, I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to just arbitrarily put a figure out and say it's this and, and, and that it doesn't cover some of what I believe it should.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, just to kind of bounce off what you were asking, Pat. So I mean, the actual answer to Pat's question is no. I mean, in the yes or no aspect, you know, would you be willing to do what is on the plan and then provide the three hundred and fifty is, is, it's a no. You're not willing to do that.
I believe there's a lot in that plan that speaks to mitigation, and I'm happy to do it.
I, I understand that's your position, but, but I'm asking a yes or no question on that.
I think that's, that's a no. I think there's some that has to be clarified. I think there's clarification involved and, and probably a little bit more necessary.
Okay, I, I know, so I totally understand your position on that. Just wanted to get a, a clear answer out there. One comment I would make is, I was, I was curious myself, so I looked that up, and I, I believe my math is correct, not my strongest suit, but the twenty-twenty-one general fund for Bridgewater was approximately sixty million dollars. So assuming we get the maximum amount of mitigation money from this project, it would be less than two percent of the town's yearly operating budget. Now, whether you consider that significant or not is up to you. I just found that an interesting fact, and I thought I'd put that out there.
Do we want to talk some more about this? Do we want to close the public hearing? What do we want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I think.
I'd like to clarify some stuff and try to, I, I'd like to work this out tonight, if we can, and.
I, I, I have no problem with you trying to clarify stuff. I think, and I, I, I would also agree to close the public hearing tonight, if you get, get what you want clarified. At the same time, I know about all of you, but I get tired very quickly at night, and we have more business on the agenda. I would, if, if you get what you want, Mr. Chairman, I would even recommend we close the public hearing, but our discussion take place at the next meeting, so we can see everything that's been discussed tonight, because I've, I haven't taken good notes. So I, I, I would have difficulty voting tonight. So I think our discussion should probably take place at the next meeting.
Well, so can we try to, what I want to try to do is, you know, we have, we have concerns from the public. We have concerns from the board. I'm trying to figure out if we can get to where we need to get, or can we get a compromise tonight? I just, I'd like to try to get somewhere. I, I mean, personally, I, I mean, if you want me to throw all my cards on the table, I mean, I'd, I'd be willing to give up that. I'd rather give up the three fifty for the streetscape and have him do what's on the plan and, and, and reduce the project by six units, and I'd be comfortable with that at sixty-one or whatever the heck it is. But I, and, and give him the three fifty back and let him do his own thing on the street. I just, I think having money tied to the town, him doing some work, us doing some work is just not a, not a clean thing. That's, that's where I'm at. I, I can be convinced either way, so. But I'd like to try to move this, to try to get this to, to the finish line if we can.
I, I, what would be repeating myself of earlier meetings. I'm open, I, I think we're obviously all open to compromise. My feeling is that any money that is mitigation money, I prefer seeing it thrown into the development. I've always felt that way, that, that the money that the town gets for fixing up the common and the Veterans Memorial is nice, but I'd rather see it in this project.
But.
But again, we're, when we, when we discuss this project, I think everything is open, so.
Yeah, but just to be clear, Mr. Jimmy, and you're not saying give him the extra unit to input the money to the project?
No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't clarify myself. I would like to see if, if we can compromise a reduction of units, because from my perspective, and I think it's been voiced by not only residents, but others, that if there is any problem with this project, and I think in, in general, it's a very nice project. If there's any problem, it's too large. And it's by reducing, leaving a few units may help, it will help, I hope, some of the potential issues, in other words, crossing the street, parking, safety, things like that. If we can reduce it even a little bit, I think that would be good. Everybody that, that has commented in the affirmative on this project, I don't think anybody on this board disagrees with. We need something like this. It would, it will be a boon for the town. I'm very much for it. I just think it's too large. And so if, if mitigation money can be put back into the development itself, I think that would be great.
Well, I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Pascal, but in fairness to him, I think he's been very honest, open, and straightforward about not being amenable to a reduction in units. And I, perhaps that position has changed, but I believe it would be wasting his time if that's going to be a condition that we need fulfilled.
I didn't say that would, that would be a, a no vote for me. I'm just saying, I just gave you my opinion. I think that if, when, when we do discuss this, everything is on the table. And I, I, as I, for one member of this board, is, is open to essentially anything. I just, we need to discuss it, that's all.
Well, I, I guess the next question is, if we were to, if we were to tell this item by item, Pat, to get past that three fifty with the, with the streetscape and everything else, and, and Mr. Pascal was stating that it's kind of a mixed blend that he thinks is blending in. On that portion of the mixed blend, are, are we taking that you're thinking it's fifty thousand, you're thinking it's a hundred thousand, you know? And I don't know if we, we're really allowed to do that, Patrick, but what if we reduce that to two fifty versus three fifty, and he does everything on the plan? I mean, do you, do you think that the bump outs, the curbing? Is a hundred thousand dollars worth of work? I'm just, I'm just curious.
I mean, I, I think what's on the plan should be part of the project, because it's, it's all connected. I'd almost rather, I mean, I, I know we're not in deliberations, we're still, but I just, I'd rather try to work out some of this with Mr. Pascal. I'd rather almost say, forget the three fifty and, you know, to help mitigate some of the public comments, to help mitigate everything else. You know, take those six units away, keep your three fifty, you know, we wrap it up. Everybody's, you know, a little unhappy with the guys, and we move on.
Mr. Chairman, this is Carlton Hunt. Could I make a suggestion? One potential solution that has town benefit could be for the developer to solarize the parking lot and allow charging from the public free of charge. Solar costs from a direct link between the panels and the charging stations are very low cost. The town actually has that in place at, at the town hall. So a potential public benefit would be to have the parking lot solarized at the developer's expense, but the town and the public has free use of the charging stations that he will install there. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And that makes the TDR stronger.
All right, so any, any other board comments or concerns? Jane, can I hear from, whoever we heard from, Jane?
No, I agree that the work that needs to be done in front of the buildings with the sidewalk and the street, the crossing, and all of that is part of the development. Because, you know, you're going to dig a hole and then patch it up and have a nice-looking building and a crummy-looking sidewalk. So it is part of it, and then, you know, there, then again, the necessary ADA requirements and all those things that you have to do no matter what. So, yeah, leave the streetscape as part of the development. And make it nice.
All right, so where do we want to go from, from here?
I'm not opposed to Steve's recommendation. I would, I would further, I would have a discussion on that. I'm not sure what the breakout is at this moment, so I can't give an absolute break-in amount. But I'm okay with making a concession that I think is somewhat reasonable. I don't know how close he is, but again, I'm all right with that.
So my, I guess another question, just before we go into deliberations, if, if we said keep the three fifty, would you be willing to give up the credits for that three fifty if we gave you everything else and go to sixty-one?
Yeah, I would not want to do that.
So I think personally I would want the three fifty then, just because if that's what was, you know, I, I think everything on the plan is what we, what we ask for anyway.
I, I don't have a response. I think that's the way you're, you're, it looks like you're approaching it, and I think that that's, that's going to be at your pleasure.
I guess I just have a few more comments than Mr. Driscoll. So as Mr. Silva pointed out, most of the businesses in that area use street parking. I, I certainly agree with him. However, I feel this project relies on more than its fair share of street parking at the detriment of existing businesses and residents. I also feel that this is a problem that would only get worse if, upon approval of this project, other projects follow the precedent set with this one. Mr. Clarkson, I believe, made a very good statement when he said, "This project is the gateway to the future of the town." I think that's a very insightful and, and true statement. The question is, where is it a gateway to? "My issue with this project has been and remains fundamental. The project is too dense for the area." "I think it's worth noting this is a sentiment also expressed by many of the resident comments received." "If approved, this project will set a tone and a precedent for further development of the downtown. A precedent I personally feel will be harmful. Doubtless, a project like this, at least in the short term, is an economic benefit. But we are a town and a community, not simply an economy." This is not a game of monopoly where more development is strictly better. As Mr. Driscoll mentioned, some of the touted mitigation for density is essentially being used for required parts of the development itself. And being sold as enhancements to the town. I find the notion that any part of the project could use mitigation funds to be an unacceptable double dipping in a proposal that has already been allowed. Too much leniency in density. The touted benefit of the parking lot is a net neutral at best, if not non-existent. That's 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 pretty much all I have at this time.
Can I just add, folks, that that it seems to me that we continue to discuss the density of my site? And yet, on Borough Lab, on a site that's a third the size has fifty two or fifty eight units, I believe. And that's, so I find it hard to believe that we continually get pushed back on the unit counts. When, in a different scenario, this site would support significantly more units than what we're proposing. We have worked diligently with the town, try to find a number and that and accommodation that works for everybody. It was never my intent to push, push, push. We tried with with the great level of support and 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 hard work by Jennifer Burke. And Mike Dutton to find some common ground. I believe we've done that. But. I will I will just simply say, in addition, that. We keep talking about what can happen in the downtown and that it may set a precedence and the like. Well, what precedence does it set if it never occurs? No precedent is set. So. It'll it'll continue to look like it does, be what it was. And 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 nothing will occur there to the detriment of the existing businesses and any future business or development that comes to that town. So my suggestion is is that I although I know it's not perfect, I know that is a great, great. Work in progress for what both the town wants. And our development team wants. And I think there's a good a good mix for both.
Oh, so Mr. Pascal, I. I want to get this to the finish line in some some way, shape or form, so. You know, trying not to ignore all the public comments and trying to, you know. Listen to your comments and everything else. You know, the site, this this West Side site, if we didn't have any. ZVA latitude to go up to sixty seven. Would only house about fifty two units under the maximum, under the maximum fifty six units or whatever it is, under the maximum. I mean, if we can get it, and I don't know what the board will do. I just want I want to have a feeling before we go into deliberation and then can't talk to you anymore. I mean. If if we can wipe out some mitigation and get you to sixty units, is that? I mean. Is that something you can work with or? I I I'm trying to listen to the public, the board, you, everybody else. I don't think anybody's going to be happy at the end of this. That probably means it's fair. But i- if we can give up some mitigation that you're giving us, you give up some units. I'm not asking you for money that you're not benefiting from. You know, and we said that, you know, the. Minimum threshold would be sixty units or something before we go into deliberation. Is that something you could agree to?
I I don't think that works, Patrick. I we tried very, very hard to make. In the seventies, if as you recall, this started in the eighties and went in the mid mid to high seventies. And now it's in the sixteen.
Right, but but that never complied with zoning anyway.
I'm saying from a financial standpoint, to build these sized buildings on these sites with some of the requirements that are due, it. It it's a push already, very, very difficult, especially with commercial on that first floor. You know, who knows? Who knows what that commercial will support right now based upon, you know, our current commercial climate? I think we're going to see more fallout from that significantly more in the days ahead.
So if we take if we take away this one, and and I know we're not supposed to be negotiating in a public hearing too much, and I but I just I'd rather be upfront. And before we go into deliberations. How about, I mean, how about if we said, hey, we'll we'll take away the three fifty payment, we'll get you sixty one units. I mean, is that?
I think you asked that question already. You know.
I mean, that's. We're working with you on all the others, working on the TDI, we're working with you on the on the the home purchase, we're working with you on the common, working with the other.
Let me ask you this. If we if we removed, and again, I'm trying.
And I I I'm one member, we have to go into deliberation. I'm just trying to throw ideas out there so we know.
Yeah. If if we if if it's thought that the parking lot is so inconsequential. Remove it and reduce. If there's a suggestion for reducing to a number that we can all live with, that I could live with. And remove A from from the discussion, that would be a consideration that would that I would consider as well. I don't know if that works in the overall scope. On your end.
To address that, the reason I find the parking lot inconsequential is because I believe it's primarily going to be used by residents and. Patrons of the businesses. Removing existence doesn't fix that issue. They would just go somewhere else. And further complicate the issue.
But so then it does have value.
It has value to your project. I don't believe it has value to the town.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I am back for a minute and then I will be leaving. For the rest of the evening because I have a very, very pressing. Uh, family matters that I have to deal with.
Yeah, and I'm I'm sorry, Mr. Dantner. I thought you left already. You can you can you can check out.
Yeah, I'm I'm checking out and I'm check out with these couple of comments. What you're doing technically involves a special permit. And so the idea of setting a precedence. It's in my humble opinion, and also professional opinion. It's. It it's rather used loosely. When you are dealing with special permit applications. It is not setting a precedent. Because the decision that you are making is unique to the project at hand. So what your decisions should make here does not necessarily translate to another project that may come down the pike. So we need to, we need to stop, you know, kind of refrain from. Because you know, you repeat something so many times, after a while, it almost becomes the truth, even though it's not. The fact is. Permit is involved here. And when special permit is involved, you are not setting a precedence because you have that latitude as a special permit granting authority. And the parking and the parking that is a parking A, you gotta go back. If you will, forget this project for a moment. We have restaurants around town. Where they don't have specific assigned parking. And those restaurants are flourishing, like the applicant, excuse me, the business owner of the the tavern. He had testified, he doesn't have any specific parking. He actually added additional of open seating. Around in the summertime that they use. Patrons come, so sometimes. Uh, we get hung out with minutia and calculations. And then lose, it's like going into a forest. And there were and saying, where is the tree, you know? So I think it will be very cumbersome. And difficult to try to divorce some of the, I agree, that some of the work that is being done in front of the. G, F and E and D are all part of this artwork. But that also enhances, but sometimes there are intangible values that just from aesthetic. Well, we are looking, we are forgetting the aesthetic value. Also, yes, the height is an issue. But just as Mr. Pascal pointed out. He's not using the loophole of a forty B. That we have a Borough Lab where we have in serious density. And but that person utilized the forty B route. To get that and this board did not even have. The ability to weigh in on that. So sometimes we need to, in my view. Uh, look at the uh, look at the overall of value to the town. So the areas. You know, it it's very hard to keep looking and I'm and I and I have the industry. Or the private sector, if you will, experience. And that is a lot of times people say, well, look at all this money that somebody will be making from this project. And it's almost like we want to be punitive. The idea, we if we have to look at projects from, yes, economic well-being of the town. Because you've, you know, this will add to the value of the town. It really does. Well, it will make that area look good, I think. So the key the key is. Get it to work with location and then move on. Because I hate to see you wear yourselves out. By, you know. Going, going, going back and going around in circles. Some of these questions you have already answered. And and I will, I do commend you, okay? Uh, because at the end of the day. You people that are voting are the ones. That. Actually doing the work and bearing the responsibility. So. A lot of times, your decisions might not be very light. But. On the other hand, you're not just making a decision to be light. You know? You you have to look at it that way. And make a decision and move forward and then learn from it. Yeah, but I will tell you, I just want to drive drive home the point that. We need to drop the whole idea of you're setting a precedence, you're setting a precedence as a special permit granting authority. You have a lot of latitude to make a decision on different projects and you are not bound. To replicate this decision in another project. The circumstances of other projects might change. And looking at what Mr. Pascal did just with one that building that is next to the academy building. That added value to the community. It then brought up the values of all the properties around it. And when those property values go up, the tax base, the tax value goes up. And that's how, looking at the town, most of our income comes from taxation. And so you are enhancing the value, not just this particular project, but the project properties around it. And some of those people that are opposing it now. Might turn around and say, oh, wow, I'm getting, gee, I only got paid two hundred thousand for my property, man, I'm getting four hundred thousand. That's a value. They're just they benefited. They are benefiting from the value that this project will add to their property. So that needs to be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Dantner.
Thank you. I have to leave now. Thank you so much for listening to my yapping too.
No, I I agree with you, Mr. Dantner, but I also believe that it's, you know. We have to we have to determine that these additional units are a significant benefit to the public at large. And that's, I think, what I'm trying to do and trying to nail down what the actual benefit is. So.
Yeah, Pat, I'm not sure if it's worth mentioning at all, but. It's this project is kind of in line with Massachusetts initiatives about shared parking, reducing your carbon footprint. Making cities more walkable, the whole complete streets initiative. This really does mirror that.
I agree.
Uh, but Mr. Colin Bonus is raising his hand. Man, mute him so he may.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Um, um. I'd just like to respond to Mr. Antinero's. Assessment that this decision won't be setting a precedent. Of course, it's not, won't be sending a strict precedent. But given that this is the first. Project to come under a mixed use bylaw, it really will set the tone for what applicants will will be expecting from this ledger, from the from this. Uh, zoning mechanism. The fact is that they're really extracting the. Pretty much the maximum density they can from the legislation and certainly less than ideal location. And so. We can be sure that any subsequent applicants filing under this. This mechanism will be will point to this project and say, well, look what you gave them. And there'll be sort of coercive pressure on the planning board to to kind of. Maintain that pattern of of really rather liberal awarding of density bonuses, so. I think we need to get it right. I think this is, you know, the first time we're really using this legislation and. We'll be living with the consequences for years, for decades. And so. I think the the board can take the time to negotiate a better deal and. Something that works better for the town in the long run to set a good tone for future development down the road. Thank you.
Board members?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, right?
Well, I'm I'm sort of repeating myself. I think. Mr. Chairman, that unless other people from. Residents or whatever board members want to speak. If there's no new input. I would make a motion to close the public hearing. And that we deliberate at the next meeting. You know, I I think we as a board have three options. We can approve as. Given, we can deny the whole thing. Or we can approve with certain conditions that we end up with during our discussion. And maybe that's unless there's new information coming in, maybe that's the route we should be going. Again.
I'm I'm willing to sit here till midnight if it takes. So I'm happy to accommodate anybody who needs that time to try to get this done.
Make a suggestion, make a suggestion. We have other other things on the agenda tonight. If you're going to continue this conversation, can we at least put a hold on that? And get these other people through because they've been waiting here for two and a half hours now. And I don't think it's fair to keep them here any longer.
Totally agree. I I think they should be continued, whether it be in an open meeting or whether we close the public hearing, it should be continued.
Um, I I'm just, I'm not suggesting you continue it to a different day. I'm just saying, if you're going to keep talking about it tonight, can we at least just put a like a pause on it for now? And get some of these other applicants out?
Well, my feeling is that after nine, nine thirty, I'm out of it. So I think if. I think the best thing in my mind is to continue to the next meeting.
I'm not interested in that. Do we do we want to close the public hearing or do we want to? Keep it open and and just pause while we take the other info up. Somebody make a motion.
Keep it open while we pause.
I make a motion to keep it open while we pause then.
So by Michael. Do we have a second? So we'll just take a recessing from this meeting. By Michael, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Bye, Steve. Any discussion?
I'm not sure what we're doing.
We're just recessing from this meeting in a minute. If you want to come back and close the meeting right after we do the Form A, we can we can we can certainly do that.
Okay.
So do I do I have a? Michael McDonald, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Garina?
Yes.
Can I me a second, everybody, right? All right. So we just all we did was recess from that meeting. All right, what do we have on? Can you bring me agenda up?
Mind a modification of the old field of states to.
That's continued. There was an advertising issue on that.
We read six seventy five.
Correct, Jasmine, do you have that in front of you? Could you pull up, put that up on the agenda backup? Mrs. Faranachi, do we have the? The agenda? Ms. Burke?
Hold on. I don't I don't know where Jasmine went. Hold on one second. I'll have to, I was relying on her. I'll have to pull it up. Hold on one second, please. All right. Give me one second. Okay. Can you see my agenda? I'll make it smaller, but can you see it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Not required for six seventy-five Auburn Street. You need to pull that plan up.
That's the Form A, correct?
Yes.
Do you want to give a little, do you want to give a little background on this or?
Um, sure. So this is, uh, um, solar, um, the property that was the subject of the solar farm. Oh, guess what? Over a year ago now that, um, the planning board denied the uh, project and has been subject of litigation. Um, this project now is submitted an A and R plan. Um, I believe the, um, engineer is on the phone, so I can unmute him. He can more likely explain the purpose of the A and R to the board, but I can, I just know that this is relative to that property. So, Mr. Clem, if you want to explain to the board what the purpose of the A and R plan is?
Sure thing. In, uh, if you want, I can share the, share the, uh, plan if you want me to share the screen.
I actually have it right here.
Okay. Alright. For the record, my name is Lucas Clem from Clem Lantervang. Um, prepared this plan for the applicant, uh, Pillar LLC. Uh, the purpose of the plan is to subdivide the approximately hundred and twelve acres into, as of right now, it'll be four lots and two parcels. Uh, lot one will contain the existing dwelling number six seventy-five. That lot is basically going to be almost a little over twenty-five acres. Its frontage is on Auburn Street. It's got a hundred and eighty point seven eight feet of frontage on Auburn Street. Um, then we want to basically construct two and a, two A and R lots off of Auburn Street. Lot two and lot three, both of which will meet the town's front engine area requirements. Lot four, um, will have to go before the zoning board of appeals for a special permit prior to being considered buildable. But we figured while we were doing the A and R, we could create the lot now. Um, with the notion that it's not buildable until said time that, uh, special permit, um, might be granted. Parcel A shown here, um, will likely come back before you guys as a little three or four lot subdivision. And parcel B, the large sixty acre parcel in the back, the intent is to donate that, um, to the Wildlands Trust. So just to give a little, um, idea of which, what each lot is intent.
These all meet front of the area, Ms. Burke, correct?
They do.
And, and I see that it's not, it says subject to a special permit, but is that adequate? That it's not just labeled, not a buildable lot? Are you comfortable with that language?
Yep, that's exactly what we do. Yep.
Okay. Any board, um, comments on, on it or questions?
Looks good.
If there's no board comments or questions, can we have a motion to endorse?
I'll move to endorse.
So motion to endorse by Michael, do you have a second?
I'll second.
By Jean. Any discussion? Okay, so again, it's a roll call. Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. Garina? Did I, I'm losing my mind. Mr. Garina, correct?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I said Mr. Geller first, right? Okay. Um, next up, we have a minor modification of what we have deemed to be a minor modification. It's up to the board to determine it's a minor modification to reduce the size of the flex building at, at the Clamont site and to, I believe it said in the memo, remove fifty-five parking spaces. And pull the building and the parking further away from the wetlands. Is that correct?
That is correct. I believe that. Uh, Tony Brennan is here for the applicant and he is unmuted.
Tony Brennan?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ed Brennan. I'm an attorney with an office at one seventy-four Dean Street in Taunton. I represent the applicant, uh, the Clamont Companies. Uh, and the quick summary of this request, it was accurately stated by the chairman. Uh, the board may recall that you approved the site plan in, you know, this past November. Uh, as a result of, uh, of certain market information that we've gotten from potential occupants, we have actually made the building a bit shorter and a bit wider. And in the course of doing that, we've reduced the size of the building by three thousand square feet. Uh, we've reduced the number of parking spaces and we have pulled the, pulled the building further away from the wetlands in the southwest corner. Uh, we've decreased the impervious area and increased the open space. So overall, it's the, the impact of this building has been reduced, uh, from what was previously approved by the board. So we presented this, uh, to the board as a minor modification in that, uh, we've lessened the impact in all regards. Uh, the drainage, uh, continues to comply with all the requirements. It meets the local, state and federal uh, groundwater standards. So there, there is no, uh, there, and a full groundwater report was submitted, uh, if it was needed. Uh, but the project continues to comply in all respects with the zoning, side yard setback, front yard, frontage. Uh, it's simply a reduction in the size of the building and moving the building further away from the wetlands and reducing the parking. Thus, we presented it as a minor modification.
And do we, um, everything else is staying the same?
All the improvements to Fruit Street, everything's staying the same. Uh, just the building's been moved a bit and reduced in size.
So the staff has reviewed this, correct, Ms. Burke? And then a lot of you were in favor of this, I believe.
Uh, yes, that's what our package is.
Yes, that's correct. And, um, I believe, um, the system planner reviewed it as well. And she, if she has any comments, but I, I don't see any issue with it being a minor modification.
I don't have any comments except that I spoke with Azu and he said that he agreed it would be a minor modification. He didn't think there'd be any dramatic changes to the drainage.
Are there any proposed changes to the drainage?
It's reconfigured a bit, but the capacity has not changed. It's all in the same area.
It got pulled further away from the wetlands, I believe, correct?
On the south, well, I believe on the southeast corner of the property.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, Ms. Farinachi, you said that Azu did review it, correct?
He did look at it. Yes, he did. But he didn't give a formal letter or email or anything.
Okay. Alright, so do we have a, um, a motion, but?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Yeah, I'll make a motion to consider it as a minor modification.
So, so my, minor modification by Mr. McDonald, do you have a second?
Okay.
Was that Mr. Jemian?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any discussion on it? So I'll start with Mr. Garina.
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So now we should take a vote to approve the minor modification. So do we have a motion for that as well?
I will make a motion to approve the minor modification.
Mr. McDonald, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jemian, any discussion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Garina?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. So the minor mod, minor modification is approved. Thank you, Attorney Brown.
Thank you very much, folks.
Okay, is that all we have on the agenda, Ms. Burke? I can't see it again. Can we blow that up? So.
Sorry, I'm been talking to you this whole time and I'm muted.
Okay.
I know, I just said, yes, that was everything, um, as far as projects goes, but I didn't know if you wanted to make an announcement regarding Old Fields. In case anybody was here for that.
So, so we did have a, uh, a major modification request for Old Field Estates, but I believe there's an advertising error on their end.
That's correct.
They, it's, they have to re-advertise or, or I don't think they advertise at all, correct? And, and then.
Right.
Alright, so it's a notification. Okay, so, and so do we have a motion to continue Old Field Estates two to four twenty-one, twenty-one?
Moved.
By Mr. Geller, do you have a second?
Second.
And Mr. McDonald? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Garina?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. Alright, so do I have a motion to come out of recess on, um, sixty to eighty-eight Broad Street?
So moved.
And Mr. McDonald? Do we have, um, a second?
A last second.
And Mrs. Garina? Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mrs. Garina?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay.
I was muted. You do have, um, approval of minutes, but.
We can do that at the end.
We can do that later, last.
Alright, so board's feelings.
Well, Mr. Mr. Chairman, um, during your recess, I believe you received an email, um, as part of the public. I think it's supposed to be part of the public comment. Um, it was sent only to you, I believe. I don't know if you have access to your email.
My email sent, hello. Do you wanna, um, is Mr. Wood on?
Was. Not sure if he still is. Let me look. Yes, he is.
He is still on, yeah.
I don't know that he has, um, audio though. I think that's why he sent an email.
Do you have the email?
I do.
Do, did he want us to read it into the record? I have no problem doing that if you did.
Um, I believe he does. I, oh yeah, yes, he, he would like you to read. Oh, I don't understand his email, but yes, you, I think you would like it read.
Do you want, do you want to put it up, um, on the screen and make, and then somebody can read it?
Yeah, hold on one second. I just stopped sharing. Okay, can you see that?
Not yet. There you go.
You can't see it? Okay.
You're sharing your whole email, though. You might not want to.
I know. I don't know how to.
Just double click this email that you read. Yeah, there you go.
Alright, now can you see it?
Yes.
Do you want to read it, Ms. Burke?
So this is an email from, um, Councilor Wood, um, dated today at nine, ten P M. All since the hearing is paused but still active, I wanted to share this note with you. I am very reluctant to mention the work with the Walgreens Plaza because it's in the very early stages. But I think it's important for the board to think about. There's plenty of parking to support the Broad Street project. One of the reasons I really love being a district counselor instead of an at-large is that I get to focus on my greater neighborhood. Over the years, I've probably met over half of the business owners or managers here in the district. And I've talked with hundreds and hundreds of folks that live in the district. During my time on the council, I've taken a hard look in the, at the downtown parking situation, learning its ebbs and flows and its various challenges. I've traveled Broad Street often and this weekend I've traveled it four times. On this weekend, like many others, all the spaces from the Bridgewater Eye Building down to the train tracks were empty, except for two cars near Crispy's. It's that way all the time. Open spaces twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's been that way for over a decade. When you look at the Spring Street lot adjacent to the Burger King, it is also often empty at any given point in the day, seven days a week. A few years ago, before he was president, Fred Clark would meet with each councilor over a meal to chat about issues that affected the area.
I believe there's some private information on that, uh, that email.
Oh yeah, I don't think we're supposed to be reading this, actually.
I would take that off the screen.
Okay, sorry. I thought it was supposed to be red. My bad.
As I just went down.
Yeah, same. I saw the same thing.
Okay. I think Mr. Wood is on a phone call. I can ask him to unmute if he wants to speak. Yeah, I, I unmuted you, Mr. Wood. Or you could hit star nine, I think. Try muting yourself now.
In the meantime, can we have that email forwarded to the, uh, the members?
I will, yeah.
Thank you.
Try muting yourself now.
Hello?
Oh, there you are. You're okay.
Alright, thank you. Um, sorry, I, I'm in a very noisy location. Um, I was, uh, at a, at a different meeting at the same time. The, 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 the content of my email is, is pretty simple. You know, I've, I've been involved in the, in the area for years and years and, um, I brought some of these issues up before, so I won't repeat them, but um, the concept that I heard earlier about shared parking is key to our downtown. And, um, I, I try not to go into details, but, but I am trying to work on a project where within the, within a hundred yards of this project, there is a ton of parking. There's a ton of parking that's available all the time and that becomes key to the downtown revitalization area. And, and addresses a lot of the concerns that the board is having with the parking, whether it's enough spaces for commuters, uh, in the buildings, whether it's enough spaces for, um, people who are staying at home, or whether it's enough spaces for the, for the, um, businesses at large. Um, when Nick was on talking about Greyhound, he literally had zero spaces, yet people a- adapt, as you've heard. So they park across the street in the open lot, which is owned by the town. They park on the street. Sometimes they park behind. They don't have the right currently to park behind, but sometimes they do. And there's, um, you know, if you read the reports from years ago, there's a lot of shared parking and the concern is over the shared parking and the utilization of that. And I, I, I think that the way the board and the developer and, uh, the engineers have worked it out, that, uh, there is enough parking at the building to support the residents and there's enough parking combined with body plus additional shared parking and future shared parking that makes this a, a very viable project with the density that, that everyone's been talking about. And I'd hate to see that, you know, we, we say, well, we put together this, this change in our zoning laws to make it um, so that we have a central business district development. And then we get, then we shy away from it because, well, we actually have a project before us and there might be some other projects. But the other thing about my district, which extends up the Summer Streets, includes, uh, Summer Street Cafe, uh, which has zero parking, uh, which includes the Bogarts that was just approved, which I think has probably less parking. Um, there's, there's probably limited spots for a project like this ever to happen again. Yeah, someone could, could purchase three buildings and tear them down and put up another building. But, you know, they're gonna think long hard about what the, what the area can support for commercial. For example, they're gonna think about what residential. I, I don't, honestly, I don't think that we're gonna see another project like this for a very long time. So I think the shared parking, that was the key in the note I sent out that hopefully everybody can copy of. The, the shared parking in the areas there, we have to make an effort to make it work. And I, I know the board is focusing on a specific four lot or five lot project, but we have to look at the surrounding area and take that into consideration. I, I hope the board will. There's a lot of details in that email. I, I didn't want to send it out as earlier because there is some information in there that, um, you know, we're still working on. But, um, you know, I think it's important for everyone to think about. And, uh, thank you for your time. And, um, you know, thank you for volunteering. Uh, it's not often said, you know, you're in the same position I am. We do it for the town. We don't get paid for it. And, um, we try to do the best job possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Alright, so. Where, where, where's the board? Want to go with this? Do we want to close the public hearing? I do want to keep discussing. Where where's the board? Want to go with this? Do we want to close the public hearing? I do want to keep discussing.
So there's another phone number that has their hand raised. Do you want to take one more public comment?
Sure.
I don't know who it is, the last four nine one nine seven zero. You should be able to hit star nine and unmute yourself. Oh, I'm sorry, star six.
Hello?
Hi.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me? This is Jim Candido on Stetson Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Candido, we can hear you.
Thank you. I've I've sent you some comments, and they've been passed around, so I won't dwell on all of those. I just want to make a couple of quick comments, however, regarding safety is still a major issue. Traffic is a major issue. And it was mentioned this evening, people could pack on Stetson Street. That is not viable because the maximum amount of time you could pack on Stetson Street is forty five minutes. Those signs were put up a few years ago because the whole street was backed up with lodging house tenants and students parking here and elsewhere in the town. Just another quick comment regarding properties being developed. I believe it's Locust showing on assesses map twenty one lots ninety five ninety eight and two oh two to two oh five, two oh four, I'm sorry. And it mentions, and correct me if I'm wrong with any of these numbers, if they've been changed with all your meetings, residential units being proposed is sixty seven. Being proposed is a hundred, and parking spaces is one thirty one. With the bedrooms, that would be one one person per bedroom would be probably equivalent to a hundred cars. And that would give you thirty one spaces for employees and other people having to utilize those buildings. If you have more than one person in a bedroom, that's going to also increase the number of cars. So I still see parking as a major issue that will contribute to traffic jams, et cetera. Mr. Woods mentioned he traveled Broad Street a few times over the weekend. He was absolutely correct. Easter weekend is very quiet in Bridgewater from the inside of town. People staying at home or going to grandma's house, and I wish it was like that all the time, but it's not. So just want to mention the Stetson Street, the parking issues. Still don't like the height. And wish the design was a little bit better, but that's just a couple of quick comments. Thank you for taking it.
Thank you. Okay, do I have any feedback from the? From the board? Do we want to close the public hearing?
If there is, if there are no other comments from the public or from anybody else on this call right now, I will make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Is that a motion or just a statement, Mr. Jimmy?
That's a motion. My motion is the intent to close the public hearing and that the minutes to what happened tonight be distributed to members of the board because a lot was discussed, which I didn't take notes on. And that at the next meeting, the board discusses this project and votes on where we're going with it. That's my motion.
Do a second for discussion.
I'll second.
So a motion by Ray, a second by Jean. So I'm going to throw something out there because I'd like to wrap this up. If it's the will of the board to continue this, could we not go to our next meeting, but host a special meeting just for this applicant at the next meeting, at next week?
I'm amenable to that, but I want to see if the developer is also amenable to that, because I know he wasn't particularly fond of going to the next meeting, understandably.
I I.
Well, I'm just trying, you know, it.
Firstly, I can go with next week, but I don't see any rush. We spent, as has been pointed out, it's been a year in discussion prior to getting to us, and we've had it since September. I see no reason to go not go to the next meeting, but if you want to go next week, I can do that.
All right, so let's do this. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. We have a motion by Ray and a second by Jean, okay? So.
On that motion, is that just to close the public hearing?
Well, I was asked about what my intent was, and I guess I'm not sure I'm not a parliamentarian, but I think my motion is simply to close the public hearing. But I don't know, but my intent is that we go to the next meeting to, whether it be next week with the regular meeting, to discuss how we're going to vote.
So before before I I vote, and just while we're still in discussion on this motion, can I ask Ms. Park a question if you're still there? I can't see her.
Still here.
So the mitigation that we've been back and forth on a little bit, it the board ultimately can condition how they want to condition on that, right? I mean, I wanted to try to get some more clarity on that, but before we close the public hearing, an agreement. But if if we do go with the six additional units for that, the streetscape improvements, we can ask for the three fifty outside of that streetscape, if the board feels that's in the best interest of the town, correct?
I think the board can condition the project any way they feel they need to condition the project. It would be up to the developer to determine if the conditions he feels are unreasonable or not what he believes are appropriate.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we have a motion to close the public hearing by Ray, a second by Jean. So I'll start with Mr. Geller.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Jemmy?
Yes.
And I'm yes, okay. So do we want to start our discussions now as a board? Are we beyond where we want to start discussions? Everybody want to digest tonight? Do we want to go to next week? Do we want to go to two weeks? Somebody give me some feedback.
My, again, first of all, I will say I'm tired, and it's not good to discuss something that's important as this when you're tired. And plus, we do not have the the transcript of discussion tonight. So I do not want to discuss it tonight, and I will not discuss it tonight. I'm amenable to going to the next meeting or next week, if you like, Mr. Chairman. Either way.
Any additional board comments?
No, I that's I agree with Ray. Just to review everything that was said tonight and not try to do it.
Is anybody open to having a special meeting next Wednesday? Can people make it? Can the staff make it? I hate to do it to people, but just to try to.
Jasmine, do we have a ZB A meeting next Wednesday?
I, um. I mean, we have one schedule. I don't know if we have anything on the agenda or not. No, I don't think so. The last thing we had was ten brown field. And that was.
So if we don't have anything on the ZB A agenda, then Jasmine and I can make it. I don't know if Les can or not.
Les is on vacation. Oh, Les is on vacation next week.
But just to try to wrap this, but this is recorded anyway, correct?
Correct. It is recorded, yes.
So, so.
It'll be up for view in the next.
No, but what I'm saying is if if we want to have a special meeting to keep this thing moving, Mrs. Dohr can do the minutes off the recording, correct? Or is that not legal?
Yeah, she could. No, she could watch the recording and do the minutes from that.
But isn't that pressing things that bed Mr. Chairman, and to have her going on vacation next week and have her.
Jennifer, we do have a ZB A meeting. We do have that ten brown field that.
Okay. Oh, that's right. We do. So Jasmine and I are not available next Wednesday.
How about? I could move things around like Tuesday or.
Not available Tuesday or Thursday, personally.
I see no reason to go not go to the next meeting, Mr. Chairman. We have problems with next week anyway.
Nothing else on it, please.
The only issue I see with that is I don't know whether, you know, I don't necessarily know how this works in the background, but I believe the developer indicated he was not amenable to going to the next meeting. I don't know if we need his consent to forward it to that point, or I'm not sure how that works. We've never really run into this before, at least while I've been here.
Close the public hearing. I have a second, a motion and a second to continue it. I'm just trying to continue it to the least amount of time possible, so if.
Yeah, I'm just, can we continue?
We could do the, so if everybody else can do Wednesday, Jasmine and I can split our time. I can, she can do the ZB A meeting, and I can do this meeting if that's what the board's pleasure is next Wednesday.
Not to make things difficult. I have a city meeting for work from my regular work job.
What time, what time is that, Steve?
That meeting is scheduled, I believe, six thirty. I haven't gotten the agenda yet. It's either going to be six thirty or seven thirty.
Firstly, I'd rather get the developer answer tonight in respect for his time, but I mean.
Other than that, I'm available any other day next week.
So we have a motion and a second to continue it. We just, I have the motion open. I just need a date. Does somebody give me a date?
But I repeat my other, can we continue a meeting to a date that the applicant does not want it to continue to?
Well, with.
Yes, you don't, there's no, there's no constructive grant issue, so you're fine.
Okay, okay.
We're deliberating, and we're going to issue a decision, so.
Yeah, I just procedurally wasn't sure. I thank you, though.
You're fine.
So Mr. Jemmy, we we have a motion to continue this, right? Well, actually, Les.
Been made. I just said that I'm willing to meet any time between now and the future. It could be next week. It could be the regular meeting. I just see no reason not to continue it to the next meeting, in particular, since other people seem to have a problem with next week.
Les, is Les still on by any chance?
Yeah, yes.
Did I, I'm losing my mind because maybe I've been here too long, but is it, is it, is it? Did we, did I make the, did we already vote to close the public hearing?
Yes.
I don't have a motion to continue yet.
Okay, all right, that's where I'm screwed up. All right, so. If somebody wants to make a motion to continue, make that motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we continue our deliberation of Broad Street to the next meeting, which will be.
April twenty first.
April twenty first, at whatever time's available, six thirty. That at that point, we deliberate and we vote.
Well, we have two things on the end of that night.
What is that?
We had the informal discussion about Perkins property. And we had the old field modification.
Can we push out the Perkins to another date, just to?
Yeah, I'll call, I'll call, I'll call them and push it out.
Push it out to me.
Push it out, okay.
I just, I want to get this.
Old field you have to do, though, on the twenty first.
Yeah, that's no problem. So why don't we do, why don't we do Oldfield at six thirty? So the applicant, so this project is not waiting around, and then at seven o'clock, we'll start this.
I'm actually out of, I'm out of, I'm away that week, Patrick.
The twenty first?
Go on, yeah.
What, what is that? Is it, so next week's the fourteenth?
Yep.
And you can't do the fourteenth, Steve, right?
Yeah, I have a different city meeting. I mean, I can get back to you if if I I find out where I fall on the agenda, but I won't know that till.
Do you do that from home? Could we schedule it for next week, and then if there's a problem, you can, we can try to work it out, Steve?
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? Because we can't make it earlier if we make it later, but we can make it later if we make it earlier. You know what I mean?
Yep. I mean, I'll do anything to help, just keep in mind I get my second shot that day, so hopefully I'll find that back.
Take vitamins, take a thousand milligrams of vitamin C three days prior, every day for three days prior.
And maybe you won't feel like falling asleep.
Would it be, would Steve, would it be better if we went a little early? Could the board do earlier on Friday, on next Wednesday, like five thirty?
Oh, I believe.
Well, some people, Michael works. I mean, I'm not going to speak for him, but you just got to make sure that people can make that deadline.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in Boston Wednesday, so I could do that. My only concern would be, I believe Steve said his meeting starts at six thirty, so I would wonder if an hour is enough time, given the scope of the project.
Close the special meeting, so what? Yeah, I know what you're saying, and I don't know when they put the agenda out for mine. I know on the ninth. I might know this Friday when it's going to happen.
Does it have to be on a Wednesday? No.
No, doesn't. But Michael indicated that he can't do Tuesday.
Oh, what about Monday?
I can't do Monday.
Okay.
Just to go on record, I just looked at my schedule. I didn't realize I do have commitments Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I can, I will cancel them if necessary, but I prefer going the following week.
Could you do earlier, Ray? Like if we did five thirty on Wednesday?
Wednesday?
A week from today, the fourteenth?
What I'm, what I'm saying is, if I think this is important, and I'll try to accommodate if everybody else, I again.
Tomorrow?
This is my ideal, but if you want to do it when one day next week, I'll do it. I'll try anyway. The earlier the better, though.
Mr. McDonald, let's see earliest you and Steve could do in on next Wednesday. Could you do five o'clock?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
You do five.
All right, five's better for me, too.
I'd rather have Mr. Pascal here. I'd rather have the board here. I'd rather get it done sooner than later, so.
The only, the only thing, Mr. Chairman, that I would need, though, is that we buy that Wednesday, actually preferably by Friday or the latest Monday, we have the notes of what happened at this meeting, what was discussed.
Well, you won't have those notes.
Jennifer, can I send the transcription from Zoom?
Yeah, so we get, we get a, you won't have Les's notes, but we get a Zoom transcription where we can send you.
Okay.
When will the recording be posted?
We'll get it tonight when we finish, and we'll ask I T. to post it tomorrow. Usually, they post it that same day, but no later than Friday. It'll be posted.
Okay.
All right, so if I can, is, I have my calendar in front of me. It's next Wednesday, the fourteenth.
It is.
And we're going to do five o'clock.
Any, any.
Mr. Pascal, you're available next Wednesday at five?
I am, yeah.
Mr. Clarkson, is Mr. Clarkson available? Does he need to be there?
Yes, for sure.
All right, so let's have a motion then, if we could. Alright, so, let's um have a motion, then, if we could.
I'll make the motion, since I started this, that we have a special meeting scheduled for five P M on Wednesday, April fourteenth, to discuss the Broad Street project and vote.
Do a second.
I'll second it.
And Mr. Garina? Any discussion? Alright, so I get the roll call vote, uh, Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Garina?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. Um, Ms. Barak, could you bring up the agenda again, please?
Jasmine, can you do that?
Absolutely.
To be honest with you, I didn't read the minutes, so. Say that again, Ms. Garina?
I did not either.
So my meeting, my meeting, I just, I just looked it up, my meeting starts at seven o'clock, Wednesday, the fourteenth, I'm number four on the agenda, so.
So we have a hard stop at seven o'clock and vote, alright? That, is that good?
Yep.
Um, okay, so, can, I mean, if if people are comfortable with the minutes and have read them, I did not read them, so if somebody wants to make a motion, there's enough people comfortable with them, we can do that.
Let's do it the next meeting.
Okay, okay, any um? Alright, we're good then, so do we have a motion to a John?
No move.
Second.
By Ray, then Michael. Any um discussion? Did Julia quit already?
I'm still here.
Who who made that motion?
Ray, Ray made the motion, I seconded.
Yeah, I forgot it already.
Maybe it was good we didn't deliberate, because my head is.
Deliver it when you're tired.
So, um, Mrs. Garina?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so, welcome to the board, Julia, and Astrid, you still hanging in there?
Of course.
Alright, goodnight, everybody, so just a reminder, next Wednesday at five, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright.
We'll send out an agenda, and like we normally do.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night. Night.